Good evening, everyone, and welcome to today's meeting. The City Council meeting, I call this meeting to order at 6:01. And this is the White Council Successor Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting, Wednesday, January 18, 2023. And thank you, everyone, for joining us, those that are here joining us in the chambers and also those that are joining us via Zoom or via Facebook. We do have our council, there is our two council members that are joining us via Zoom as well in today's meeting. And I believe we have the translator, do we have the translator today?
Yes.
Yes, okay, perfect, so I won't I won't say this in Spanish, but just as, just as a reminder, there are several ways to join us in today's meeting. You can join us via the meetings, the via Zoom, the meeting ID is located on the agenda. After today's meeting, that is You can also join us via telephone at 1669-900-6833. And just as a reminder, if you are joining us via Facebook, please note that any comments will not be recorded there, so if you want to make public comments, please join the Zoom meeting. So at this time, I will turn it over to our city manager for Roca, please.
This comes under the heading of other duties as assigned. Erico Tem Jimenez.
Jimenez here.
Jimenez.
Jimenez here.
Councilmember Chavez here. Councilmember Corolejo.
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera. And Mayor Velazquez.
Here.
All are present?
Thank you. And we'll move on to our next item on our agenda, which is closed section reports, and today we have none. So we'll move into our pledge of allegiance. And I will ask our mayor Proten, if you can lead up from the pledge, please.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, universal, and just for all.
Okay, so we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, and at this time is modifications or modifications to the agenda. Do we have any at this time?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move on to our public comments. So at this time, any member of the public may address the city council on items not appearing on the agenda and items of interest to the public that are within the jurisdiction of the council, please note you will have, speakers will have three minutes. Please be brief, to the point, and when you come up to speak on the podium, if you're speaking on the podium, or if you're on Zoom, you can just please raise your hand so we can unmute you and recognize you, and if you can please state your name and your address. That would be great for the record. So at this time, do we have any public comments from those joining us in the chamber? Okay, seeing none, I will take it out to Zoom. From those joining us via Zoom, are there any public comments? Okay, so I see none either. So we will close our public comment section, and we will move on to council presentations. And at this time, we have two council presentations. We do have a total of seven minutes for the presenters. And then we'll have some questions and comments from the council after the presentation, so we'll begin with item one, which is community engagement manager, this is one, and so Sola will present a quick presentation update regarding the community engagement department, so I will turn this over to Mr. Vonsola.
Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Kizil Balenzuela, I'm the community engagement manager here for the city. And we will be doing the presentation myself and our coordinator, Dina, about, you know, what it is that our department has been doing. As you know, this position was approved in 2020, December 2020, there have been a number of turnovers over the years. And so when we started our position, we found that, you know, maybe it was time for a little bit of a reset from some of the other priorities that the path, and so what you will be seeing today represents something that, you know, as somebody new to the city, as somebody that this is my first city government job, I definitely wanted to get a feel of the city of solid dad and understanding of the departments before coming in with a strategy. And so, that being said, what we have in the presentation is a representation of those strategies, so what we have found is that community engagement specifically for the city of solid dad can be broken down into six major areas, which is media and branding, and that's what you have seen recently, you know, with an uptick in social media posts with an uptick of the completion of videos, you know, we have definitely improved the quality of our videos. The direct engagement that is going out. Let me see if I can full screen it for you. There we go. A direct engagement, which represents going out there, you know, old fashioned engagement of community members, you know, door knocking, going to events, tabling, you know, as the new city manager, as you say, it's not always just about one way communication, it's not about us promoting events, but it's also about getting feedback from the community members, and direct engagement definitely represents that. It's events and resources, and I think I hear we'll talk a little bit about some of the things that she's been doing, but when we started, we go right into the solid dad summer days. And it's those types of events that we hope to continue those because solid dad, it's a growing city, but it still has that small town feel, and events like Fourth of July Veterans Day, that's still definitely very important. It's fund developments, I think that this is a very unique position, and that fund development was one of the areas that was asked for, and so just as a quick little update, you'll probably hear more about this at the next council meeting, but we have been working with Community Foundation of Monterey County to create a special fund so that they can have as a pass through for some of the, some of the things that we want to, you know, develop funds for, for example, I was talking to W Chief about the possibility of using that as a way of raising funds for the explorers, as a way of raising funds for the, you know, some scholarships that happen to ask for, for if they want to get involved in something important, but maybe not afford it. There is definitely a civic engagement component to this position. We do believe that civic engagement, you know, much more than showing up for an election every couple of years, it's showing up to these meetings, it's showing up to events where council is requesting feedback. Then of course, general support. Whenever any of the other departments needs our support, we are there, whether it be to create a special event for them, whether it be to, you know, get input, I think my first assignment was ARPA workshop. And so it is, if any department need help with engaging community, with creating a video, with generating funds, we are here to support. So as mentioned, and I'll pass it over to Dina so she can talk a little bit about this as well, is that this is still a new department, seven months is my job here, a couple of months for Dina, but you know, there are some exciting things happening, so Dina?
Hey, everybody, thanks for having me. I know I've formally met most of all of you guys, including I'm Dino Diva, I'm the community coordinator. I'm from the area, so I have a leg up on Jesus here, so I just wanted to let you know a few of the things that I've been working on, other than just continuing to maintain our Facebook and our presence there, really wanting to get the good news out, I got to be with the police officers this morning, and I really enjoyed that, and that was a great start to my day. So like that, as well as notifying residents of all the stuff that is happening with our weather, with different parts of the city, if something is happening on a street, or what have you, and also general information, as well as the great stuff that gets to happen, and so that I've helped plan and not execute so much the Christmas parade, but that was a great experience, and I'm hoping to join in as well on the Fourth of July, I've already made contact with that, along with continuously working with my summer internship program that I'm actually planning for. I've met with the high school, I've made contact with CET and Mr. James, so that is coming up, I'm actually meeting and presenting to the students on the first, and as well as attending their career first, so I really want to get some good candidates interested in city government to have a passion for whatever we are able to offer them and teach them here. I'm also working with Monterey County Workforce Development for our job fair. So we're hoping to have one in April. That's the, that would be the third one that we would be having. So and luckily for me, I worked at Hartnoff, I actually attended both events prior, and so I kind of have an understanding of how this works. I'm also assisting with the summer days and trying to support as much as possible our solid dad police department. Luckily for me, they've been able to invite me to a few of the events, and like I said, those are the fun things that I get to be part of, which I'm truly lucky for, makes my day go faster, and I really get to be involved in the community, I'm part of everything. Another good thing that we're hoping to start is the solid dad resource fair, where we have all our departments available at our community center, that will be brand spanking you with the new floors and different parts of everything, so I'm hoping to have a research around that way, and everything in the community knows what PD does, what Dawn does, what we do, what, you know, what everybody in the department does, teaching the community what we do, and also aligned it with a game against PD and fire, so that was just as a thought, and I'm really excited to try to get that going out there, so those are just a few of the things that we have been working on, well, along with the solid dad senior banner campaign, I'm sorry, so I'm hoping to get all the graduates for coming up in 2023. I've got, also met with the, with the principal, and so hoping to get that information out to our students, our seniors this year, and displaying them after, because we're hoping that the veterans park will have a standing memorial, and so will have availability with the polls and to display our future of solid dad. And I think that's all I have for now, I'm a little nervous, sorry about that. And so, oh, also, I'm helping a large part is with the general plan, or the park and rec master plan, I'm sorry, and the general plan, so that's taken up a little bit of my time lately, so so that's all I have. So, go back to us.
So, you know, like, like you said, it is a lot of support. I think that you will see the majority of the work of our department more embedded in the work of the other departments, right? If the other departments need an event or workshop, we will support with that. A little despair of the next slide, it made sense when I designed it, but, you know, I had to do it really fast, so, but I can explain it. So, this is communications overall, right? And so this is more than anything, a mix between two of my backgrounds, which is in community organizing and in marketing. And so communication means, you know, it's a PIO, we saw that it came handy during the emergency situations. It is telling the story of solid dad, as, as, you know, who we are, what we do. It is in the individual project, so anytime that we need to get any communication out to the media, our department provides that support. It isn't branding, you know, it's, it's things that a lot of times are not front and center, right, the color scheme of the logo, who gets to use our logo, the tone of our social media posts. It is events, as mentioned, and then, of course, traditional marketing, you know, getting on TV and radio programs, then, of course, it's on digital marketing as well. Not just posting things and hoping that they work, but actually responding to people when they post, and they comment. It's tracking our analytics, our newsletter, our SEO, and all of that, so I won't go too much into it, because I know we are a little bit over time, so I'll just say, you know, more personable way of communication. I'll end with the fact that when I saw this position open, I had two new positions open for PIOs before, and that never really interested me, because PIOs just say things. Communication really had the opportunity to engage residents in a way that makes the city the whole more healthy, right? It makes the city go ahead and help, that's, that's our biggest mission. But we will end with that, unless there are any other questions, Councilmember Ricky Minas, I won't run away this time.
Great, great.
Yeah, thank, thank you so much, Dina, thank you, Jesus, for that presentation. And thank you also just for pointing out, obviously, that it's a work in progress, right? I mean, I know that when we hired this position, we had an understanding in terms of the council why we wanted the position, and going back to some of the survey and feedback that we received from the community about limited access to information, resources, news, and what the city was doing, and to really be able to ensure that we were having a better communication, and in terms of transparency and engagement, right? To be able to do that, obviously, it's, it's been, you know, it's been a lot of things since, so I really appreciate just kind of that. Starting off with that point, that it's still, we're still kind of developing that it's a new position, and you know, something that I know for us in the prior council, for myself, was really important to be able to have someone that could bring bring that engagement, so bring a department that can bring that engagement to the city. So thank you, I'm gonna open it up for questions, let me go ahead and open it up for questions first from our council members that are joining us via Zoom as part of their participation in the California League of Cities, new mayor and city, new mayor and council members training, so councilmember Coralejo, councilmember Cabrera, do you guys have any questions? Can I see councilmember Coralejo? Hand this up, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. First of all, thank you for, for that great presentation, Dina and Jesus, I know I had actually been the person that had asked if you guys could do this presentation, and I really appreciate it. My question is, and it's not a surprise question to both of you, because I have met with both of you at one point or another. I just wanted to see if there was any plans in the future regarding doing, like, more inclusive and stuff. For example, Martin Luther King Junior Day just passed, I think in the future it might be a great idea to maybe do a ceremony, I know other cities, local cities do it, and I think it's a great way for everyone in our community to have representation, but also it's a good way for the rest of us and our children to be able to learn about different cultures and, and the different, you know, struggles that others have paved for everybody, really, when it comes to civil rights.
Yes, definitely, and we definitely want to be more bold than cities traditionally are, and so, you know, celebrating things like, you know, Black History Month is coming out of February, and letting the community know that, one, we are a whole type of community, one, we do want the city to be a representation of the community that it serves, but also, you know, doing it in a way that doesn't feel like we're tokenizing. I believe that that is the way that really can provide deep engagement, so the quick answer to that is yes, and, you know, we are definitely going to, for researchers, both within the city of solid dad, but also across the county.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cabrera, before we move on to the councilmembers, do you have any comments?
I have, I have a couple of comments. First, thank you so much for that presentation, that was amazing. I was a little bit confused about the last second to the last slide, when you had all the, the particles of the parts, because I didn't know what it was, or what exactly it was, but I think that you guys nailed it, it's, it's, it's a wonderful idea, all of the, all the things that you guys said is really interesting, but I have two comments. One is, is it possible that we can start having events for people to showcase their cultures? Like you said, we have, it used to be predominantly Mexican-American, but now we have other cultures that are coming to, to our city, and they're establishing, establishing their families there, and it would be a good idea to start asking them to give us a little bit of information about their culture, how they celebrate things, what kind of music they have, and things like that, food, can you imagine an event with food where all, everybody will bring up a plate, kind of like, things? And we used to, I am, when I went to San Jose State, they had a couple of events like that in downtown San Jose where all the people from different cultures will showcase their culture, will do little things like dances or food. So that's one thing. And the other one is last year, somebody in the, in Facebook asked for ideas about what to do in Solid Ed. One person in particular mentioned, why don't we use the wind? You know, and I started having something like kites, events with kites. And I can, I started talking to other people and they said, imagine we can include our businesses, local businesses to donate individual kites with their business name and things like that. So that we can get the community active and do things and kids love that. And parents imagine. So it's just a couple of ideas that I collected throughout the last year from, from people that are, that make comments about it. But thank you so much. I know you guys are really creative and I can see that creativity in you guys and you guys have excellent ideas. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember.
Yeah, thank you so much. So I'll bring it back to the, to the dice. First, if we have any, there's any comments or comments or questions for Jesus and then I'll take it out to the public. Then we'll bring it back. So council members, any comments or questions? I'll start with Mayor Potem.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Jesus and Dina, thank you so much for the presentation. I know we're, we're really starting to ramp this thing up now. So I, I have a lot of expectations about what it could become. And, and that being the go-to thing or the go-to information site for the citizens to see what's going in town. So with that, it puts the illness back on YouTube to ensure that we're getting that information out there too. Just like the situation with the floods, the rain and that kind of stuff was put an important part. You guys played in that role as well, in addition to our fire and police and getting that word out to them. And the misinformation that was getting out there and that there's been good solid information. So that's an extremely important role that our communications department plays, plays in with the city. The other thing is the ability to go ahead and highlight like Councilman Cabrela said, was some of the cultures that are coming in and being able to, it seems like every month there's, it's somebody's month. So and, and we have somebody from, for all those months and to share the, the history or do testaments on it and put out there on our, on our channel or on our, our Facebook site would be cool as well. And just to share that, you know, a lot of times we find out that we're not different from one another. So we all have certain cultures and experiences that oftentimes blend with other cultures. So that, that would be nice as well. Oh, the last thing is, my question is regarding the fund development. What are your thoughts on the fund development? How are you gonna establish? And my thoughts would be that, I don't know how you can do it without a 501(c). How are you gonna set that up and who's gonna spearhead that? And also who's gonna determine the, the funding and the distribution of that funding?
Sure thing. So we're jumping into that, just on the information part. I believe there's a, we looked at the box that actually mentioned that we were one of the few cities in Monterey County that didn't have to retract that information. So we are very proud of that. We, you know, especially when rumor was having that the 101 Bridge was gonna close. You know, we made sure that folks had the accurate information. In terms of fund development, so that is one of the things that I have done in the past in my previous position. And so the first step was to reach out to the Community Foundation of Monterey County, knowing that a 501(c)(3) was A, gonna take a lot of time and B, it was gonna be a little bit more complicated. The Community Foundation drafted up a contract for us, you know, it will come, come to you where, you know, we set up a goal, let's just say $10,000 to get all those, you know, students in the summer basketball camp scholarships. Once we reach that $10,000, they will release the funds to us. At that point, city manager will, will be in charge. If the city manager delegates that to, that's a good example, to Jessica Fox at the rec, then that, that's how it will go. Of course, that is also up to your approval. My job is to develop the funds and so it will go in. My ideas is to go through sponsorships, you know, reach out to the add families around here, reach out to Taylor, to Dole, you know, have relationships with a lot of, of those businesses. But also, you know, aggressive campaign. I'm sure that a lot of the community members here would be willing to donate as well. So in terms of the fund development, I will, I will spearhead that. In terms of how the funds get extended, I will leave that to the city manager.
I will quick to share and I, I don't want to forget this if I may. One of the ones when we talk about, we talk about Dole, right? Because Dole's right there. But we can't forget and they, they're real good as far as being out there and donating to organizations is Taylor. Taylor runs the carrot place now, what used to be the Joni's site that we need to reach out to them as well. And they should be an active participant in our community as they are in other communities on the peninsula in addition to Salinas. So we wholeheartedly look for Taylor's assistance when we go to develop this one program. Well, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank, thank you so much. Councilmember Chav.
I don't have a whole lot. I think you guys are doing a wonderful job. You know, we're seeing a lot more consistent posts, I think, across the board when we look at our social media. And for me, I just want to make sure that we've got, you know, the next item on, on the agenda, which is to talk about the recreation master plan. So we've got that, we've got the general plan that's coming up. And for me, those are important because I think that we want to make sure that we're engaging our community. At least for me, you know, developing events as far as like, you know, big events. I'm not sure if this is the right venue for that. I think it's, I think it's a great place for the information to get out, for the support, for events to happen. I think if it were to grow and partner with parks and recs, I think maybe then we could start looking at those types of things. But I do think that what Mayor Potem mentioned in regards to, you know, those, those events that already exist or those classifications that already exist or those months that already exist for cultures. I think bringing in folks that maybe, you know, talk or present something. I think those are kinds of things I think that I would definitely feel like that's, that's the kind of stuff that the issue is coming from us. Not to say that we don't support anything else. I think we should be there to help engage, support and try to figure out how we can have those types of events in our community. I think there has been a variety of events that have happened over the years and the city has tried to support. And now we actually have a team that can help a little bit more, more so than it did in the past. So I'm glad to see that and I'm glad that we're looking at different things that can be done such as the banners. We're talking about the vets park and seeing what could be done there. So I, I think I'm good for, for now in regards to, I want to just thank you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. Likewise, I think for me, it's important to be able to kind of go back and I had to refresh my memory just in terms of what the positions are, right? So the community manager position and then the coordinator position. And really looking at what was the purpose when we brought forth these positions and approved them. And so obviously I think some of those elements are still true and looking at what you guys have done with it, but also going back and looking at what's within those descriptions, right? Which is really more of creating those engagements and strategic, you know, partnerships. And I think also being able to look at obviously those funding sources is, is something that we had talked about in previously in terms of nonprofits, philanthropic, bringing in those resources that are needed here because we understood that there is funding available, but we're not capturing that money. I mean, we had a great opportunity when we did partner with Dole when we were constructing the, the baseball fields and they were able to, to donate, you know, the score, scoreboards, right? And so really capitalizing on more of those opportunities that we have to be able to create those partnerships with different, you know, different business sectors and also, you know, different entities like the Community Foundation, which is good. But I think for me, it's going back and making sure that we are strategically putting together those, that engagement strategy that some of it is gonna do events, but I agree, it's not event coordinating. I mean, we have other agencies that do that, but how do you partner with some of those agencies to be able to have the city be a partner in some of those events as well? Or have the city initiate that, but with the partnerships that we have, right? To be able to create that and being able to put together kind of a master plan as we've started now. You know, with our second year of this, some of the master plan events that we do want to be part of, that we do want to initiate. And also looking at those other opportunities that we do have to highlight some proclamations that we can really rally around and really do more of the outreach. I know for me, as was said, in terms of the P I O, I think that was something that we've discussed multiple times previously and we hadn't, you know, we don't have a contract, but we had a contract with another organization. And I think that for me has been really important, especially as we've had different incidents like the storms, right? That it is really important to communicate with our, our residents. And there's different forms of communication, but one of the forms that we know, especially in times of need is people are going to social media. And, you know, we're not giving them the correct information. They're getting the incorrect information from somewhere else. So being able to, I think you started that already with utilization of our social media page to really have more of that accurate information. But I think for me, looking at what is the bandwidth of the team and how can we really make sure that it does act that there's an opportunity to be able to do more of that P I O expansion, right? So we are in the forefront, something happens and we are, you know, putting together those press conferences. We are coordinating those, you know, kind of that information that needs to be delivered to our residents immediately. So that way they know what's happening. And also I think for me, as we look into the goal setting session, that's gonna be really important because that gives us now as a council an opportunity to really look at, so what, what, how did we define it? What is, you know, what is in the job description? And how do everything that's gonna be done, how does it align with the council goals, right? Because it's also that alignment with, you know, supporting the council goals and pursuing the council goals. And how does, how does that align? But thank you for, you know, some of the comprehensive work that's being done on the summer internship program. Obviously, that's really important. That was part of the connection with youth and adults. The job fair, obviously, that's the economic, you know, impact. So that's, that's really important as well. And I, and I agree in terms of with Councilmember Chavez. For me, the major platforms that we really want to make sure that we get engagement because feedback from our community is imperative. It's gonna be in the gen, in the general plan and the park and rec master plan. I mean, those are documents that, you know, are gonna be in our community for the next 20 years. And we want to make sure that our community is part of that. And it's not just a document that we go out and we seek public engagement and not really have true public engagement. But we do make an effort since we have a department to really hear the voices from our community. So, so with that, thank you so much for, for giving us an update and we look forward to, to what's to come.
Well, if I just say a few remarks, still, I've been with the city of four days now, but I've had quite a bit of interaction with this department, particularly during the storm. And I wanted to alert the council that I'm hopeful that at the agenda item later, I'll give you a fuller report. But a lot of my, a lot of my discussion will be about the communication effort. And then to simply remind you that based on the schedule for the recruitment of the city manager, I realized today that I will need to recommend a proposed budget to you. And in the course of that, each department will be presenting, we hope, clear objectives so that you understand as you allocate resources, what it is we're hoping to accomplish in the year. So it'll be a little bit more words and music in the budget than you're accustomed to.
Well, we look forward to that. Before I, thank you for that. So I didn't take it up, did I take it up to the public? No, I didn't take it out to the public, so I apologize for that. So stand by just in case. Is there any comments from the public regarding the presentation? Okay, so we have no one. Oh, okay, we do have a comment.
I just wanted to make a comment. Hi, my name is Eva Binarlos and I just wanted to praise Jesus and Dina for doing a great job. You guys, thank you so much for stepping up. You know, I just see the, the energy, the passion that I see through them and, you know, just eager to make change here in Solid Ed with the community engagements. I appreciate that, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no additional comments? Okay, so I'll take it out to those that are joining us via Zoom. Okay, and this is public comments at this time? Okay, so Councilmember Coraleho, I know, I don't know if he's gonna have your hand up, but we're on public comment portion now. Okay, so, so, so thank you. Just wanted to make sure that I, I did the public comment portion of, of, for that first item. So now we'll move on to our second item. And our second item on our agenda today now is a presentation by Public Works Director, Mr. Don Wilcox, who will present a brief update regarding the city of, the city of Solid Ed Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So I'll turn it over to Don.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Don Wilcox, Public Works Director. Back in November of last year, council awarded a project to Blue Point Planning to prepare a park and recreation master plan for Solid Ed. The, the project team, which is Jessica, Zeus and Dina and myself, have been working with Blue Point Planning Project Team. We've been getting a lot done. We've got a presentation prepared to show you where we're at and where we're going. I would like to introduce Mindy Craig, the Principal of Blue Point Planning. I'm hoping she, she is here and if you can share the slides, we can turn it over to Mindy to go through about seven slides to tell you where we're at and where we're going with this project. And community engagement is a huge part, I gotta tell you that.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Sorry, I look like I am shrouded in this weird light. And I think it's the, the evening lights, but nice to see all of you. And it was great to actually hear the presentation right before me because as it was mentioned, the community engagement is a really critical piece of this. So we're gonna have the opportunity to come and actually be there in person at your February second meeting. So today really is just going to be a brief introduction and an overview of what the plan and what we're planning to do will be. So you'll, you'll be ready for us when we come. And I thought I'd just start a little bit about who we are. I am the owner and principal of Blue Point Planning. I started about 12 years ago and had been working in parks and recreation for over 30 years. And we have this incredible team that we bring to you with, you know, if we put our, all of our experience together, we'd probably be over like 70, 80 years. Recently, we've completed parks and recreation master plans for Half Moon Bay, for the city of Monterey, the county of Mendocino, worked with Santa Cruz on their reservoirs. We're working right now at Lake County. And we really work very closely on developing very unique and tailored parks and recreation plans that are designed to the community and really in, based on what the community says. So we're here to really listen and that's what our trip when we come out in a few weeks will be all about for us listening. So we have basically a three-phase process that we're gonna be going through and working with the team. And we've already had some great meetings to get us going. But essentially, this is a very iterative process. We will be doing community engagement. You'll see on the bottom part here, this is all the different engagement activities we'll be doing, connecting to our technical work that will end up with the final plan. So our first phase is gonna be on existing conditions and visioning. So we are gathering information about all the parks, all the potential parks, thinking about programs as you have added the recreation component, thinking about other providers, including the Mission Recreation District, private providers, looking at best trends and activities. One of the councilmen earlier talked about different cultural influences in the community. We really want to make sure that as we're thinking about Solid Ed Parks and Recreation, we also consider interest in culture and how that can be expressed through both programs and the facilities to really make them uniquely Solid Ed and to reflect and make everybody feel very welcomed and that these are their parks. That's really gonna be a baseline as we go through this. So in this first foray, it's gonna come up in a couple of months or a couple of weeks, excuse me, we're gonna do a series of little small group meetings and that's gonna be with different cohorts and the community members, everything from environmental groups, youth groups, sports groups. I think we're doing about six or seven of these small group activities. We're also gonna have stakeholder interviews and we've already started those. Talked with the supervisor of the school district, talked with the executive director at the Mission Recreation District and we have more of those. We're also gonna be launching a survey to the entire community coming right up. And with that, we will have a website where people can always go to, to get information around that. We'll then be coming back in a couple of few months with all of that information that we have gathered on what the parks are like, what the community has said, what we have experienced and what we see and do a visioning and goals workshop, a larger event. And again, I heard from the C E D group, Jesus and Dina, you know, all the work they're doing and we're gonna coordinate with them and hopefully connect either some of an Easter activity or other events in the community. So people are already there. an Easter activity or other events in the community. So people are already there and we bring them uh the parks and recreation plan and have everybody have participated in that. With all of our um activities, we'll do something in person, but we also have something digitally. So if somebody wants to go online and, you know, they can't make it because of work or, or other commitments, there'll be something that they'll be able to do on the, the website, which will be able to either definitely see any recorded activities, but also do some kind of activity to provide input into that. Um, our next big phase will be the opportunities and options. And this is where we take, bring to you all of these ideas from all over the nation and other projects nearby and, and things that might make you excited and change how we think about everything again, how we operate with our programs and how we want to develop our parks, how we include art, how we include different activities for people who are very active versus people who want to just enjoy nature. What are all those different things that might come out of it? How do we actually engage with the, the potential of this incredible natural park in your backyard as well as things like the Salinas River? Um, so we'll really provide that activity of how we think about those strategies. Again, we'll have an in-person act uh workshops um as well as a survey that'll be online and we'll check in again with you. And we may be doing this a lot as I think you, you might be interested in that. Um, finally, we'll come back after again, uh getting all that input and develop a recommendation and implementation. In this phase, we're, we're going to be thinking about what are our priorities? Um, where should the community start its work first? Um, and what is most important? And we'll have a character for every part. What, how does it fit together? How does it support the community needs? Um, and again, we'll have things online for the community members to um think about. And then finally, we'll have a final plan and we'll come to you for a final approval. It's uh estimating around fourteen months, um, given holidays or anything like that, that might change a little bit. Um, hopefully not more gigantic storms like we saw last week, uh, but that's generally our thought. Um, and we'll also be providing lots and lots of information. This is not a very exciting map at this point, but we're starting to categorize all the parks, how close they are for walking from community members. Um, how um do they serve at various sizes? Do we have a lot of community parks or our neighborhood parks or their parks for dogs? You know, what are those things? We're setting that up and this is now set up on our new website for you. Um, that will be coming out with our community survey and we should be having that community survey come out in the next couple of weeks. Um, we'll be doing, working with Dina and Azus to make sure that's outreach on all of your social media, that it's on anything for the city that we can and really connecting so we can get as many people on that as well. We'll be doing those interviews, small group meetings and council meetings in February and also doing um a recreation program assessment and a parks tour inventory. So this will all be happening in February um and lead us to our next steps. Um, I did want to just take a moment and it's apropos that, you know, we just talked about engagement. There's some big engagement goals that we have identified. We have a plan already developed with the city on how we want to engage here. So there's five, I think, maybe six, six total goals. And I'll just highlight those real quick for you. Um, what is, we want to just make sure that we have the breadth and interest and ages as many community members as possible, including those who are not typically involved. So often you'll get a lot of the sports kids or you'll get people who are already participating. We're going to really try and look beyond that by going to community members, be it at um searches, um, other events and activities to get those inputs. Um, we want to also make sure that they're very accessible and allow for all different ways of participating. So it's that in-person or online, which I just mentioned. We also want to be providing some education about the city and what the Parks and Recreation Department um offers, helping to sort of differentiate between the Mission Recreation District, why parks are so important and how, and learn what the city needs and what's for the future. Um, we also want to share new ideas and concepts and help expand the potential solutions for the community while making sure we're balancing the feasibility, that it's cost right, you can maintain it, you can operate it, and it fits well with the community. Um, and we want to really work with your partners to extend, enhance those relationships and collaborations through other focused engagement activities. And it's great, I've already had an opportunity, as I mentioned, to talk to um those partners and they're really on board with helping to extend our outreach and engage with their communities and bring them into this process, which is fantastic. Um, and finally, encouraging community engagement that promotes active recreation, sports and enjoyment of nature. So the, the Parks and Recreation Plan has this very positive beneficial um elements to the community and we want to make sure that our engagement process is in the spirit of that as well. So that's it for today. Again, we'll have an opportunity to go deeper into this and have a lot more interaction with you at our next um, uh, next meeting.
Mindy, thank you so much for that presentation. Um, so I'll, I'll turn it over to, to Don. I don't know if there's any additional comments that you'd like to share, Don. If not, we'll go out to public comments.
Yeah, my only comment is we've got a great team. The consultant team has just been very impressive, the community engagement department. Um, everything's going well and it's moving pretty fast. It's a fourteen-month project, but we're already uh making some ground on it. So we're just ready for questions at this point.
Yeah, thank you so much. So um, Council, if you're on mine, let me take it out to the public first and then we'll bring it back to the council for um any comments or questions. So let me take it out to the public. So I'm gonna um take it out to the public that's joining us here in our chambers. If there's anyone from the public that'd like to make any comments or has questions for our consultant team as well as our city staff. Okay, seeing none. Okay, you do have one.
Yes, Mindy, thank you for the presentation. Um, I just wanted a question in regards to the, I wanted to, I don't know, I believe I missed a little bit of the discussion regards to the parks. Um, I wanted to see something that we can, you know, benefit here for the city as well, you know, being help, you know, think about help, you know, benefit, but there being some type of um idea in regards to, I don't know, doing like an assign, you know, what is it called? In, in total park, there's like little stations where you can work out, you know, pull ups, whatever. Have an idea. So I just wanted to throw it out there. Thank you.
Right.
So Blue Zones group is going to be involved in helping us, helping us with the old aspect and possibly the Solidad uh healthcare district. Expand on those elements.
Yeah, tha- thank you for that comment. Um, anyone else from our, that's here in the chambers? Okay, anyone that's joining us via Zoom? Okay, I see none. Then I will bring it back to, um, let me start with the council that's joining us here in our chamber. So I'll start with Councilmember Chavez. If there's any questions or comments.
You, you know, I, I don't think I have any questions. I'm glad to see how everything is spread out for fourteen months when we're looking at really serious engagement early on, uh, doing some workshops, uh, trying to not only touch uh the usual folks that participate in uh something that has to do with parks and recs where a lot of folks that are involved in sports typically will be the ones that, that get involved in something like this. So I'm glad to see that you're trying to see how having small cohorts uh with different groups that probably could include seniors, that could include uh different groups that we're talking about that may be interested in the arts. Uh, you know, a variety of different uh cohorts that could get involved. In addition to that, the stakeholders that you mentioned, and I'm sure there are others beyond that that you're looking at. Um, and so I know you guys only had seven minutes, so I'm, you know, I'm good with, with the information that was, that was moved forward. And then also the various surveys that you're talking about that would be done in, in different fashion. So hopefully uh in the past, uh, the police departments of King City, Greenfield, Gonzalez and Solidad uh did surveys that were done online and were mailed directly to uh our residents. So I think in this uh case, I would like to see that when, when we're doing those surveys that we're putting the links on our social media, that we're putting it on our website, that we're doing it on this website, that we're doing it um uh also through our billing system that we already have. So we already have uh a way of, of sending out bills for our utilities. So including uh the possibility of something and that would be uh another way that we could just go ahead and make sure that we're doing it uh in, in different manners. So that when we are talking about trying to approach uh different people, uh, everybody is approached in different manners. So I'm, I'm glad that we're doing it in this way. Uh, and then I'm also very happy that we're looking at the three phases, uh, the vision goal workshop, uh, all of these things and then bringing it back to us, going back out as a draft to, to get some more input and then finalizing because I think questions like what Eva just brought forth are going to be out there in the community. And during this fourteen months, I think some of those things could be added into this master plan. Uh, because we do have uh a new park that's being developed currently. But we also know that in the future, there may be others that, that could be developed. And so getting that information is, is crucial for our community. So uh, thank you for everything you guys are doing. No questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez. So I'll turn it over to Mayor for ten minutes.
Yeah, no questions. Thank you, Mayor. Um, just looking forward to starting the process. Uh, sad about fourteen months and get the public's input, so. Should be, should be, should get some good information.
We'll have a lot more on February first at the, at that council meeting as well.
Right. Yeah, great. So let me take it out to um Councilmember Gavreda or, or start with you. If there's any questions or comments.
Yes, I have. Well, when I was reading the document and the information that you guys have right there, first, I'm sorry, thank you so much for the presentation is, 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 um, for me is, is uh very rewarding to see that, that we are focusing more in engaging our community and in different activities. But um my concern, not so much now, but before, when I, when I was reading the, the document is, is, is this going to take fourteen months? So that means that we're not going to see the result until probably May or April of next year. And how mu- how long is it going to last? This is, because if you, if it's going to take fourteen months to plan, is this going to be like kind of a plan that is going to last forever or how many years before we have to actually come back and see that if, if it is actually working or not? And the other thing that I, that I am a little concerned is are we going to have specifics for next time? For instance, I read that the um uh stakeholders, who are the stakeholders and who can participate in these workshops? And what kind of themes are we going to talk about in these workshops? And the last one is, is this going to be, that survey is going to be in, in English and Spanish as well? Okay, so those are my, my overall, um, probably more because I have, I'm lacking a little bit of information than, than, and I don't understand the whole concept. Yes, yeah, but uh, um, I hope that you can, you guys can provide enough information. Next time. Can you?
Yeah, would you like me to do a little?
Go ahead.
I can give a quick answer uh to a couple of those things if, if you do one. Yeah, fourteen months always sounds like it's a long time. But uh in order to really get that engagement that we want to, it does take time to schedule it and move that forward. Um, yeah, it just, you know, given that all the ones we've done in the past, you know, it's usually up to eighteen months. And if you have COVID thrown in there, it really, really creates a problem. But um, and so I, we should have great results. You'll actually start seeing things sooner than that. You'll start seeing, oh, I get it, like by the middle of our process, you'll see, I see what this is going to happen to this, this park and that park. Usually a park and recreation plan is about twenty years. Um, it's similar to a um general plan, but often what we'll do in that implementation side is we'll have a a one to five-year implementation plan so that the city can start working through those things and get that. And then they'll update the implementation plan. But the plan itself should be solid in terms of sort of setting a path for you and the community to move forward for the development of new parks and new ideas and, and redevelopment. So at least that's what we're going to be aiming for. And we can go into more on that and, and all the stakeholders and so forth when we come back in, in February.
I see. And are you guys planning including the all-inclusive park that we are building right now?
We're going to look at everything, looking at potential parks, potential ideas. Um, yeah, we're going to, we're being as comprehensive as possible.
Well, thank you so much. That makes sense.
My pleasure. Great, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Corolejo.
Um, yes, I actually don't have any questions. I think my colleagues all asked uh some great questions, so thank you. Um, the only thing I wanted to say uh to Mindy was just I, I love your energy. Uh, thank you so much for bringing that to our, to our community and I have, you know, faith in you. It sounds like you're already reaching out to key stakeholders. You know, you already have a plan implemented and just I wanted to say, you know, keep it up. Great job.
Good, thank you. Can't, can't wait to see all of you in person.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mindy. And I just my final comments on this and then we'll, we'll move on to our next items. Um, just in terms of the general plan, so this is, so just so I can make sure that we're clear, um, obviously the general plan is a ten-year document that the city's going to engage in. So is this, this is a separate document, not related to the general plan that we obviously have portions of parks in the general plan.
Correct. So our last park master plan was two thousand nine. This one's going to go way beyond what that one went through. Um, and that's what, well, thirteen years ago, this is parks and recreation, including inclusive elements of all our existing parks, you know, we're covering everything with this. And it is separate than the general plan, recreation and parks and recreation element, but um we'll certainly interact with the general plan update process for those elements.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that um for our public. So it is a separate document. And with that, Don, I think for me, just now, thank you so much, Mindy, for bringing um already the different components. And as was mentioned already, right, making sure that there's inclusive participation and that we have all the populations within um our community that were already, you know, outlined, elderly veterans, those with disabilities, making sure that all of those are part of the conversations and the website launch. I'm excited about that, but also I agree that there's other modes of outreach, right? Because not everybody is, you know, is versed in that and how do we make sure that we reach out as much as we can in terms of the outreach component? Um, for me, it's, it's exciting also to be able to look at all of the partners that we have. And as we engage in this process, I think it's also an opportunity for us to bring in those partners that we traditionally haven't. I know we have Pinnacle's National, National Monument. And how do we really bring that in to, to be able to see, you know, maybe we don't have some of that infrastructure here, but, but utilization of that park for recreation component, how does that fit in with our overall master plan? I think that's really, that's really imperative. And then the health element, I know part of the general plan is going to include a health element and recreation is part of that, right? So we can't separate recreation also from some of the health components. And I think for me, as we're having this discussion, also the infrastructure and design element. So I know that obviously the design of building a community um and looking at recreation and looking at, at parks, some of that also includes bike lanes and infrastructure and design. And if those are part of the discussions to be added to um to the master plan. Um, those are just kind of some of the comments that I wanted to make. And then, and the long, long term, I think it's really important. Um, and um, the other is, i- it's a fourteen-month process. Can we get a timeline so our community knows? Here's fourteen months, but this is what's going to happen within, you know, each of these different months. So that way our community is aware, maybe, you know, this month they can participate in this, but this is what's happening here. And this is where I really want to engage. So at least there's, you know, more of a comprehensive timeline of when different activities are going to take place, to be able to have that as part of our engagement with our residents.
Yeah, we can do a roadmap and ship it in the product here. And as far as uh by the angle, everything we do, the survey, in fact, Dina spent a lot of time uh translating the survey portion today. So we can have it ready in the next week or so.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much, Don. Thank you so much. Um, Mindy, we're looking forward to uh see you next month and thank you so much. This is exciting for us as we move into our next phase of work. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. And at this time, we have consent calendar and we have one item on consent calendar that is coming. So um, if there's any members of the council that like to pull item C one uh for further discussion or not, I will take it out to the public first. Let me ask the public if there's any members of the public that want to pull an item from our consent calendar for further comments or questions. Did you have a question on item C one?
I will, you know, I, I think it's a minute for me today to, to tell you guys about, uh, I'm trying to see about the regards to the bond for the one million dollar bond insurance that you guys are asking for the little league. I'm trying.
Okay, so, so that was probably under public comments. Um, so we'll um make sure we get some information from you in terms of what you need. His, can you?
What else can I ask you? Would you please meet with Mr. Valenzuela? So you're not on the agenda. So we, we're, we're, we have to follow specific rules about how we handle things. We want to hear your request. Okay, and be able to respond to it. So could you talk to Mr. Valenzuela?
Thank you. And public comments just for everyone that, that happened during the earlier question, a portion of our agenda. Um, thank you. So um, Council, then if there's no comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve item C dash one.
So move.
Okay, so I have a question and a second. Um, Will Cox. Okay, so I have a question and a second. Roll call, please. And I think we have to do a verbal roll call, correct?
Oh, okay.
Because we have two of our council members joining us via Zoom.
Alright, so Mayor Protan Jimenez.
Yes, hi.
If I mispronounce your name, so please tell me.
Yes, here.
Out of order, Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Yes.
Mayor Valesquez.
Yes. So motion carries unanimously. So we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. And at this time, we have four business items for today. And we'll start with item B dash one. Townsend Public Affairs Man and Funding Monthly Report. So I'll turn it over to our Economic Development Director, Brian Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This is a quick refresher. In September of two thousand twenty-two, the council. Approved a consulting services agreement with Townsend Public Affairs for help with legislative. Legislative advocacy and grant funding services. On January sixth of two thousand twenty-three, TPA submitted monthly grant funding report. That outlines different opportunities that they could focus on. The focus is on economic development, youth violence prevention, domestic violence relief, housing, parks. And recreation, including pet recreational areas and transportation. Staff member, Ms. Anastasia Heaton. Will be doing a short presentation to the council this evening to keep the council updated on, on their work so far with grants. And legislative activities. So I think Ms. Heaton is on Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'm Anastasia Heaton. I'm glad to be here for my first grant update to council and work on behalf of the city as your grants coordinator and writer. I'm also joined here on Zoom with my colleague Alex Gibbs, our grants manager. He's listening in. Let me go ahead and share my screen. Okay, so to give a bit of background on Townsend Public Affairs or TPA and what we do. Our firm specializes in state and federal legislative advocacy and grant writing. And we do provide, like mentioned earlier. We do provide grant writing and state legislative advocacy services to the city of Saladin. And we focus specifically on public agency clients and have represented over three hundred public agencies up and down California. TPA founded in nineteen ninety-eight, has successfully won two point six billion dollars in funding on behalf of our clients. Um, this number doesn't include formula, formula dollars that agencies automatically allocate to local governments. Um, while we do apply for that type of formula funding, the two point six billion dollar number only includes competitive funds that we've written. On behalf of our clients. Um, and advocated for. I know the city has been incredibly successful with quite a few recent grant programs. Such as the statewide parks program for the Mets and Orchard Park. We're here to leverage our expertise, our research, our relationships. And our team of seventeen registered grant writers and lobbyists to serve as an extension of your excellent staff. Um, and to free up their resources to focus on additional priorities for the city. Um, so the first few slides here, I'm going to skip over because these are focused on state legislative updates that my colleague Andres Ramirez. Will be presenting to you during your next council meeting. Um, so I'm going to move along to slide eight right here. And so this is a brief overview of what we alongside staff will typically evaluate to determine if a city project will have a competitive. Um, chance of grant funding. Several common grant metrics will include if a project is shovel ready or not. This is often a key determinator in if the agency is interested in funding a project through a grant program. As well as if a grant serves any disadvantaged communities or underserved community impacts, this is a specific priority on the state level. Sorry, and then as well if there's a match requirement, and if, if this is the cost the city is willing to take on. And able to take on if a grant was awarded. So that's what we determine. It's a high, very high level overview of the kind of conversations we have to look at if a grant. Fits in with a city's priority projects. And then if we decide that they are a good match, we'll go forward alongside staff to prepare an application. And that typically looks like providing a checklist of required application components, working alongside staff to repair these components. We'll draft all the narrative. Typically, grant applications will require budgets and performance timeline. And then we also leverage our relationships on the state and federal level to help secure letters of support from your elected officials on behalf of the, of the, of the application. And the project, help advocate for the city's needs through, through the review process. And then moving into slide nine, we have a snapshot of five upcoming grant opportunities for the first quarter of two thousand twenty-three. Um, this is by no means a comprehensive list of all the grants that are out there or even due in the coming months. We have a much larger living document that we send to staff on a monthly basis, like was mentioned earlier. But these are five ones we feel that do align closely with quite a few of the city's priorities that we discussed in our meeting with staff on Friday. So looking at this table, we have some upcoming grant opportunities and homelessness resources through the California Interagency Council on Homelessness. Uh, traffic safety, programming, economic development through the Canadian Economic Relief Fund. Uh, firefighting equipment through the Assistance to Firefighters Grant. This is one the city's been successful with in the past. And we're already in talks with preparing an application with the fire department. Um, the same goes for the traffic, Office of Traffic Safety Grants. Uh, as well as the Clean California Local Grant Program through Caltrans. So during our meeting on Friday, we talked to staff about each of these programs, as well as the other ones, included the memo unidentified ones that. Overlap closely and that have, you know, quickly upcoming deadlines, like the January thirty-first one that we're going to be working on preparing applications for. Um, this includes requests for firefighting equipment, such as extrication devices and other equipment needs. Um, and then for grant programs that are a little further out, like the Clean California Grant Program, expected to be due in April. Um, we discussed possible veterans enhancements to Veterans Memorial Park or other park and street beautification projects through the, through the city. And then looking forward into two thousand twenty-three, we do expect to see additional funding solicitations in various city prior, priority areas. This includes historical preservation, additional parks funding, economic development, as well as transportation infrastructure. Um, so I hope this presentation was able to provide a brief sample of the current state of the grants world. On our upcoming work with staff to pursue and achieve funding on behalf of the city. Uh, we know that your mission as a city is to serve the community and prove that, and improve quality of life. Uh, and in our mission at TPA, we see ourselves as champions of better communities. So we are very excited and proud to work on your behalf and begin to bring funding back to your residents. Um, being here tonight, listening to your amazing community outreach plan and Parks Master Plan both tie in really well. Very closely to what we do in the grants world and in making competitive applications. So we're really excited to hear about what is going on at the city. And work with everyone going forward. Uh, please don't feel, please, please don't hesitate to reach out anytime if you ever have any grants or funding related, related questions. I've included my contact information here, as well as my colleague Andres, who you'll be meeting at your next council meeting. Um, thank you all.
Thank you, Anastasia, for that, and for the presentation and the information. I think. I'll turn it over to Brian for.
Yeah, I just wanted to have a, a presentation from Townsend, Mayor Valesquez. Moving forward, Jesus will be the contact for the staff to work on different grant opportunities that we may have interest in for, for the city.
And just so, I know it was noted that a part of the legislative update, because there's two pieces that the city funded with TPA. And one was obviously to help in the grant writing, the other one is a legislative priority. So that will come back to the council, correct?
It doesn't worry me.
February meeting, okay.
First February.
Just so that we, our, our council knows and also our, our public, that this is just right now is focused on some of the grant.
Grants.
Opportunities. And then we'll have the legislative portion of it on, on, in February.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, so thank you for that. Let me open it up to the public first, and then I'll bring it back to council. If there's any questions on this item, it's just a report, so there is no action necessary on this item. So I will take it out to the public if there's any questions from the public. On this presentation. Okay, and I'm having troubles with, let me see. I can't see. Okay, sorry, I couldn't, I wasn't able to look at the participants. Okay, got it now. Okay, so there's no questions and comments from those that are joining us via Zoom. So I'll bring it to any comments or questions from those that are joining us. Here in the chambers. Okay, so seeing none, then I'll bring it back to council and I'll start with, um, council member Chavez. If there's any questions or comments.
I just have one, one question for Miss Meen. Uh, in regards, you mentioned the Clean California Grant. And, and you kind of spoke a little bit about Veterans Park, possibly the, the Clean California Grants. I'm just trying to see how that ties in with the Clean California Grant that usually ties in with highways, freeways. So I'm just trying to understand that. And then, um, are we thinking that it would tie in with possibly an active transportation grant? Are we thinking that maybe it would tie in with safe routes to school grants? I mean, what, what's the thinking behind that? If, if that's what we're looking at, or are we just exploring right now that idea since it is in, in April?
Uh, great question. Um, so I think right now we're still in the exploring stage of opportunities. Um, Caltrans hasn't even released final guidelines for this grant program. So everything we're talking about right now is still very tentative before we get. You know, the hard and fast rules and what's going to be eligible. Um, parks and park spaces as public spaces are eligible under the Clean California Grant Program. Um, they do focus largely on cleanup and beautification. Uh, so I think if we do move forward with veterans enhancements for the park. They would really have to have that strong cleanup and beautification element to be competitive for this grant program, which is very subscribed to. And then to, to, to address your comment on, you know, safe routes to school and active transportation plans. I think there is overlap between the two grant programs. Um, but I think it depends on the scope of the project we move forward with, where we could hypothetically leverage. For example, Clean California wants funds for a future active transportation program cycle. Um, or, you know, demonstrate the work of a Clean California Grant in a, in a safe route to school plan or cycle. If it dealt with cleanup projects that involve, you know, student transited areas. And so I think there are possibilities with both of those, but, uh, as of right now, there's nothing concrete hammered out about the scope of the project. We'd be applying for.
Okay, and, and the reason I was tying that in is because I know our front street is, you know, considered a, a highway or at least. Kind of an extension of one. So I'm just wondering if that could be part of the thinking. I know it's just an exploratory right now, but I'm just, just wondering if that could be part of it.
Certainly, yeah, that will definitely be something I bring up with staff when we meet, um, as we learn more about this grant program as it's released. Um, we can definitely either look into submitting two applications, one that targets that and one that targets the park. Um, or combining them into one hybrid application and going from there.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Mayor Protan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, if, if the menu so far looks encouraging. Uh, one specifically or two specifically that, that, you know, interests me, you know, as well as the others. But more importantly, the, the Economic Development Pilot Program, uh, something like that, because we had a discussion the, not too long ago about. Um, you know, bringing retail business here, which we're, we're, we're out there pursuing it, doing an action, dog, utilizing the Brexit report. But also now looking for employment opportunities for our citizens, uh, so we don't become that bedroom community. Or we are, we don't become more of a better community than we are presently. Um, again, looking for high-quality jobs, whether it's in the technical, you know, arena, uh, technology, excuse me, arena. And, uh, we're giving opportunities for, for our citizens here in our community. And the second one, that's not on here, that possibly could be in the state one that's gonna be presented next week, well, uh. The Youth Violence Prevention Program, I think, you can't lose sight of that. It's been, you know, continued to, continues to be on my mind. And some of that, as a community and as leaders, we need to pursue that. And ensure that we do something and not ignore it. But thank you for the, the presentation. I look forward to, you know, this month and seeing what we have. What else you have coming forward? Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, so let me take it out to, uh, Councilmember Coralejo, and I know Councilmember Coralejo. For those of you, I know they're, they're having some technical issues. I think she's back now. Um, but just in case I know.
Yes.
Yeah, she turned off the video because of technical issues.
Hi, I hope that everybody can hear me. Not sure if you guys could still see me.
Yes.
Um, but yes, thank, thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to say, I'm, you know, very excited. I think this is something that we've been wanting for our city for a long time. Um, we could definitely, you know, we have so, so many different, um, needs. Uh, for our city and for our community and for our staff. And it's great to, you know, be working, uh, be working with you. And, um. I'm losing my, um, my thought here. Sorry, just with the technical difficulties that I was having, I was struggling. But, you know, I just wanted to say if, uh, if there's any, any way that I know we've really been having, uh, an issue. When it comes to recruiting for our police department, when it comes to recruiting for our public works. Um, and I know we have the intern program for our youth. I don't know if there's any way maybe we could, you know, get some grants on, you know. Perhaps that's the way we have to start going, kind of doing internship programs or something similar to that for those other. Uh, departments where we're having challenges when it comes to, to recruiting. Um, but yeah, I know, thank you. We have, uh, so many different needs. So I'm excited to, to get this going.
Thank, thank you. Thank you. And so, um, let me take it out to the public before I make my, my comments.
Before, can I say something?
Oh, so Councilmember Gavara.
Don't forget about me.
Yes, I will. Thank you for reminding me.
I don't wanna be the devil's supplicator here, but, but it's just for my information. I, I was not able to read the whole document my first time, but, uh, um. I was, I was looking at that, at all the grants, and it's, it's exciting to see that, that we're gonna have somebody with, with the skills. The need to, for us to apply for those, those grants. But I had two questions. And like I said, it's just for my information. What is the success rate that you guys have? Them, and let me, let me give you the other one, because that's, that's, that's tied with that. And I saw that you guys, uh, charge a percentage of that grant, right? Or is just a set lim, set price for every, every. That you apply for.
Right, so we do not legally, as registered lobbyists, we are not allowed to, um. Charge from, I'm, I'm not sure, certain with the exact technical languages, but receive any grant funding or any, uh. Funding wins from our clients as a percentage. Um, we operate on a flat monthly retainer rate, which means that you get to have me write as many grants. As you want. And I have my team backing me, so we're able to provide that support if there are, you know, very busy grant seasons. Um, so we operate on a flat monthly retainer rate. We do not receive any, um, percentage of wins or anything like that. Um, as for your other question for the win rate, um, I'm not, it's difficult to determine, um, you know, what. A concrete win rate would be, but I can say all of our client or nine, I believe the statistic is ninety-eight or ninety-nine percent of our clients. Have received a full return on investment, um, within the first year of hiring us as grant writers and lobbyists. And out of that, out of that upper percentile, I believe it's. Seventy to eighty percent, uh, receive over a hundred thousand dollars within that first year in grant funding. Um, so we have, we have a, um. We have a, a strong history and a legacy of success with our clients. And I'm excited to bring that to the city of Saladin as well.
Thank you. Thank you for the information.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Councilmember Gavara for that. So let me bring it back to, um. Let me take it out to the public and then I'll make my final comments. Okay, thank you. Sorry. Uh, yeah, thank you for keeping me kind of on track of what we're doing. So, okay, so, um, I do, I have a couple. I just have, you know, thank you so much, Anastasia and Alex, for the presentation. I think this is something, obviously, that is a council. We have determined that it was really important for us, especially given the year that we had last year in the legislature where, um, you know, there was. An abundance amount of funding. Um, and so just, uh, as we'll hear next, in, in February, obviously, the situation. For that funding coming from the state is gonna be different as they're in a twenty-two, twenty-two billion deficit. And so the funding will not be there as what we saw this year. But the good thing is that all the allocations have been made. So the funding is there from the state for all the, for all the different programs and different buckets that were awarded. So. So that's really promising because there is a lot of money. And I think for us, we wanted to make sure that we really focus. So that's really promising, because there is a lot of money, and I think for us, we wanted to make sure that we really focus on um providing um access or having access to those, those fun, funds, knowing that our staff is limited as well and didn't have a lot of the bandwidth, and although they've done a great job um that there was more opportunities that we probably were missing. But I think the other component to that is that we also look at maybe what, what, what we can, that is um not possibly now, but that's coming forward, in that if we have shovel-ready projects that we already start working on, how can we get to some of those projects and those funding sources by being able to look at you know, what's being required now, so we can start putting together the project, or we can start putting together the different elements, match uh funding that's needed at that time, and I think again, just looking at the priorities that we had identified before as youth violence, as um Mayor Protan mentioned, is something that I know was really, really important to this council, and that we continue to really focus on some of those um uh you know, some of those funding sources to, that really address some of those elements in terms of youth violence, and making sure that there is a strategic comprehensive plan that I know we talked about of and how do we support to be able to develop that, and how do we get resources? Um and not just, you know, hopefully we're looking at a sustainable source of funding, and also on the housing component, obviously. There's, you know, I know we didn't see a lot of money come down in terms of the housing round, but, but there is farm worker housing money under the Jocerna Fund, and how do we really start looking at some of those under other pockets, as well as economic development and recreation, I think those, as Brian had mentioned, are some of the priorities. And as we sort through all of the different, you know, applications and grants that are available, really focused focused, you know, with, with some of those and making sure that we're really getting ready. And I know, Anastasia, you had mentioned that you're sending you're sending the availability of these, uh the applications monthly to staff, and I guess for me, it's just it's, so how are they being filtered out, do we have a point person, does every staffer, is it, so it's going to community engagement? Okay, and then, so Jesus is in charge of that, and then he filters it out to the rest of the uh departments?
It's correct, so then, so department head staff would look through the different grant opportunities. We're, you know, bringing it up to Jesus as to possible grant that the department would be interested in, as long as it aligns with the council goals and priorities. And then Jesus would talk to interim city manager, please.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for providing that, I think for me, I'd just make a request that I know that there's been different um grants that have been received by the city, and I think it's important, I know congratulations to the police department that received the Office of Safety Traffic funding, um but I think it's important for the council to be aware of that, so if there's an opportunity for us to be able to look at with some of these grants that are coming in um and, and are being submitted and approved, that we also have a list of those as part of the monthly reports um that are provided. Um and maybe that's probably easier to, to focus it on our city interim city manager, who can kind of give us a list of that, so the council's aware. And then once those are awarded, I think it's really important, not just for us, but also for our community to know, here are the funds that are coming in as well as part of this process. Um so I'm looking forward to that, I think for me, just the encampment resolution fund, I know obviously, that's um you know, really addressing some of the issues with homelessness, and I know there's other communities that have received this, and there's a lot of different ways how this money can be utilized to be able to bring in different resources and um a- and really address those encampment issues that, you know, we obviously don't have some of the larger problems that the city of Salinas or other, other communities have, but, but we obviously do. And so, yeah, I know that's uh coming up, up in February, but there's, I think that there's another round in April, and how do we really start looking at that? So I'm glad that we're having our workshop in February, uh because this will kind of help us hear from the public as well. Um and then the um Caltrans, California Local Grant Program, I know that there are cities um others, I believe the city of Salinas also received a big grant, uh grant for these, so how do we start looking at that beautification, I know we, we talked about that, but really focusing on some of those opportunities that we really have uh to tie in what some of our existing initiatives are, and then working with some of the partners that already receive these grants. Um how do we work with them as well? So thank you, I'm excited about that, and I'm excited to be able to hear the presentation in February as well in regards to our legislative platform.
Certainly, thank you all for having me, excited to continue working alongside the city.
Thank you, thank you, and we look forward to seeing you in February. Okay, Brian, thank you so much for the work that you're doing as well. Okay, so we'll move on to our next item on our agenda, and that is item B dash two, uh filing, filling of a planning permission vacancy, and I will turn this over to Ariana.
Hi, good afternoon, Councilwoman, what I see, Assistant Planner with the City of Florida. Um at this time, I'll be presenting briefly a staff report for the filling of uh planning permission vacancy. Uh it is recommended that the city council, the city of Salinas review candidates for planning commission and consider approval of the mayor's appointment. Um if decided today. Um we brought this item back on December seventh with one application, and council uh was gave staff direction to conduct more outreach, um and have an interest workshop to engage more applicants, more residents here in Salinas as well. Um with the position, promote the position and make sure that it's out there. Given that direction, we partnered up with community engagement, so we advertised uh together with both departments, we uh advertised on Facebook, the statistics were are portrayed on the staff report. Uh we also uh published a notice on the Californian, um due to the time constraint, we couldn't do it with the local newspaper, so we had to go with the, the Californian. Um and then on January fifth, we performed a informational webinar at um here in city council uh chambers. And um it, it went really well, we also broadcast it via Facebook. Um and we got a lot of interaction as well. At this time of the staff report when it was written, and at this moment, uh there are three applications for the vacant planning commissioner position. Um it is uh for Flavio Diaz Torres, Evangelista Manuel, and Stephen Morales. Um we did provide the application and information in the staff report, and at this time, staff encourages um encourage them to attend, and I do see some of the applicants here in person as well, I'm not sure Mr. Stephen Morales is online. Okay, um if council has any questions, um or if they would like to introduce themselves upon council um direction. Um at this time, the alternative is to not appoint a commissioner um and direct staff to continue to advertise and recruit the position. However, uh staff would like to see if there's a possibility of appointing someone due to wanting to have a full commission in case uh projects in the queue become uh need planning commission approval within the next few months. Um it just allows us more security um for, for any upcoming projects, and um it's also important that uh the legal CDs is also providing planning commission training in March, so it'll be very, very beneficial for the new appointee to participate in that as well. Uh and if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer. And as I said, applicants are here in the room as well.
Thank you, Ariana, thank you for going back and providing um that uh webinar or the workshop, thank you, you did an amazing job of going through that, so I really appreciate that. So at this time, council, if you are um in agreement, if we can hear from the two candidates that are here, or unless you have any questions from Ariana?
Yeah, just your, your quick question for Ariana, I know the workshop was important, we wanted to get out there and get that information, um how many people attended of those that applied?
Of those who applied?
Yes.
Only one attended of those who applied.
And who was that?
Uh Flavio Diaz Torres was in attendance.
And it was recorded as well, right, so for um.
Yeah, so uh due to the, we did encourage our applicants to register. Again, due to time constraints, anything can happen, maybe it wasn't available to them, so we decided to broadcast it during Facebook, so it's recorded in our page as well.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, thank you for that. Um, okay, so at this time, council, if you're in agreement, let me, um if we can hear from the applicants, so we'll give them a few minutes to introduce themselves. Um and just to kind of, you know, share a little bit more about their interest in being appointed to the commission, if that would be um agreeable. So we will have, and I know we have Mr. Flavio here with us, if um you wanna, Mr. Flavio Diaz Torres, if you wanna come to the mic.
Okay, ready, fine. So thank you, city council and the mayor of Alaska for having me here tonight, along with the staff, for supporting me continuously in my journey through this, and so you know, the first thing I wanted to address was, you know, the whole point of the workshop was for the community and the people that applied to know that, you know, the things that take place with the planning commissioner. And so, you know, through the internship, through my time, you know, apart, aside from that, with, with staff and report that I've been able to see. And you know, even when Mr. Slama was here, you know, going to the meetings with him and just, and those talks. I just, you know, I got a really good idea of, you know, planning commission, we have to report to them as well. The general plan and how, and it's important to the planning commission these next couple of months, and so you know, I, I feel very grateful to the people that have, you know, that educated me in everything that it, that has to be when they come to this general plan, and so that is one thing that gives me full confidence to be here tonight, I would not be wasting anybody's time if I didn't know what was going to take place. But besides that, um I do want this position to kind of take a new role in the way that it, that it works, and so one thing that Ariana mentioned during the workshop was um community input, how important it was, especially during the general plan, since it's gonna be, you know, such a long plan, throughout many years, can affect the course of how the city develops as a whole. And so through that, you know, I've been able to create the platform these last six months to really engage with the community, to really be there when, you know, when they need it most. And so that is something that I really want to push as a planning commissioner especially. I got the chance to speak to Ms. Boykett, and she's in full agreement to this kind of action, especially since it's something that you mentioned. Now, really, it doesn't really happen that much with the planning commissioners, and so it's something that I really do want to bring in to the commission, and you know, as somebody that, I mean, I know I'm, I'm eighteen, I, but I've grown up here my whole life. Um I really got to see how the first general plan unfolded and how it helped you know, myself, my family, the, my, the people around me, and just, you know, my whole gen- my generation as a whole. And so, that's something that I really want to work for, towards, for my, my younger siblings that are a lot younger than me are going to be able to see the effects of this new general plan and the generations to come, and so you know, thank you so much for having me here tonight, thank you for all the support from everybody. And so, if there's any questions for you guys, to me, I would love to address that.
Thank you, um, I'm gonna call you Mr. Torres, even though you're. Thank you, um Flavio, for that, thank you for the presentation, so um let me ask the council, I um we'll open it up if there's any questions that the council may have.
Got one question, um, Flavio, uh if I may. I know you're eighteen years old, right, you're going to uh, uh junior college at this time, so what are your plans, are you gonna be, it's a four-year term? So are you gonna be here for four years?
Yes, sir, I mean.
Or you're, you're, I'm hoping you're looking to do other things as well?
Yeah, and so like I had mentioned before, um to Mr. Chavez, I'm also working on my business administration degree. And so, you know, I've been working, I just got on to my first year um this year, and so after that, I do plan to be in CSU MB. So that's gonna be, you know, here in one race, but very, very local, and so, yeah, I should be here for the full term. Good enough, thank you.
Thank you. So, Councilwoman Chavez?
That, that was my same, that was the same question, and he, he answered it for me before, because I was, I was asking next, I know he's young, and I know he has goals to uh to do stuff here in, in his community, I think he loves his community, so um it's been impressive that he has stuck through this process, um and, you know, really is showing that he wants to be a, a planning commissioner, I know it's beyond just the general plan, there's a lot of uh individual projects that come before uh the planning commission, and I think that through the internship that he did uh last year, he had the opportunity to explore some of that and see some of those uh planning commissions, so I think that um, you know, I think he's fully vetted in that sense, and I think that he understands uh how important this role is, and I know he's young, but I think that one of the things that I've seen uh so far, I mean, and, 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 and my only question is do you see that as a, as a, as, as an impairment to, to this position for you, or do you see that as an advantage, what, what, what would you say?
It can go either, it can go either way, depending on how you put it, but honestly, I've been to the point, I've seen it as nothing but an advantage. Um you know, I've been received very well into, you know, city government and, you know, the people that get involved in this. Sorry, and so, you know, also, it gives me a, a different perspective that you wouldn't really get otherwise. And so, I mean, and I take that as a, as a whole advantage, you know, I get to talk to the people from my, my group, from the group younger. And you know, and that's tons of people within the city. And you know, I get to relate and connect to so many different people, and I probably wouldn't otherwise, if I was from a different age group. And so, you know, I, I take what I have, and I, I, I want to hit the ground running, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. And so, um councilwoman Corralejo, and I just in the means of transparency and making sure I know that we didn't have, you know, uh kind of talked about questions in advance or not, we wanted to make sure we gave you guys an opportunity to be able to do the presentation. But I want to make sure that it, we're delivering questions that I'm gonna try to capture as much, so that way everyone has the opportunity to answer some of the relevant questions, obviously, not everybody's eighteen. Um but just some of those questions, so that way we keep it transparent and e- equal for all of everybody, all of the, the applicants. Um so just to keep that in mind, council, okay, uh, councilwoman Corralejo?
Um yes, thank you, so um first of all, I just wanted to say, I, I was excited to see that we had three app, um, three applications, and uh we have three very uh very good applicants, to be honest, so just wanted to thank everyone who submitted an application. Um my question that I have is because this is a question that was asked during the appointment for city council, and I thought it was a very good question, because it gives every applicant an opportunity to be able to showcase yourself. So my question to um, to the applicants is, or to Flavio, is um why uh what differentiates you from, from the other applicants?
So aside from my age and everything, um you know, just really the platform and the ability to reach out to the community in a different way that hasn't been done yet. And so, like I said, I've been very lucky to start working with different organizations here in town, not just city government. And so I quite use that in full effect to, you know, really communicate with the community. Not just maybe from the general plan, but like you said, there's all kinds of projects that come through. And so whatever requires the most uh community attention, that's something that I really want to bring out. And you know, and really show that planning commission is, is a part of the process of getting things in town. You know, I think people are really quick to say, oh, we want to get this, this, and this. But I think if we start to really push out the planning commission and the process of, of things, we can start to get more informed um feedback for people. And so, but it's just a matter of, you know, really getting out there, and that's something that I feel kind of separates me from everybody else. Is, you know, the willingness to do that and the ability to do so.
Okay, just wanted to say, uh thank you to Flavio, and thank you again for attending uh that very important uh workshop that we had, and most of all, for attending it while you were in Mexico, so that speaks for, thank you.
Thank you, um councilmember, I don't know, councilmember, uh Cabrera?
No, I just want to thank everybody who applied, but I, I do, I do have a question for Flavio. Everything being equal, uh meaning you and, and the other um applicants. Um, how would you um face uh opposition in, in, in the planning commission?
Such as like obstacles and challenges, challenges?
Yeah.
I mean, the same way that I would have faced everything else in life, you know, overcome it, reach out to the people around me, and the thing is, you know, in the planning commission, it's full of great people. I had the, I've had the opportunity to, you know, meet most of them, and you know, they've seemed so willing to really help a lending in Japan. And so, you know, I that is something that I do, um that I do want to lean on, especially because I'm so new to a lot of this. Um I do plan to, you know, really stick with them, and you know, and learn from their experience, you know, just because I come with a different set of advantages, you know, so does everybody else on that plate, and on the commission. And so, you know, I have no idea what's gonna, what might come at me, but anything that comes at, that comes toward me is something that will you know, you take the time to break it down, consider why it's, why the challenge, and why it's happening. And you know, and really take the time to be detail-oriented enough to figure out a solution, come up with one together, and you know, just do the best that we can as a commission as a whole.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Flavio.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you, thank you so much, Flavio, um for that, so at this uh point um I just want to concur, I just want confirmation from our attorney, I know we didn't have an opportunity to share with them that they would um obviously, they would share, but that there would be questions from the council, this is okay. Okay, perfect, um so, thank you so much, Flavio, I don't have any questions, and thank you so much for everything that you've done, thank you for reaching out to myself and to the rest of the council members as well, just to get, you know, updated in terms of what the priorities were, and um so, I really appreciate your enthusiasm, really appreciate your commitment as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have our other applicant that's here, is Evangelista Manuelos, and I will. Okay, so we have our other applicant that's here, is Avanista Banuelos, and I would like to invite her to come to the podium. And I do, I did capture the questions, council. So here's what I have and. Um, so we'll begin with the introduction and interest in the appointment. And then if you can share your interests of, will you, your interest in, in, um, you know, of being part of. The commission and then will you be able to feel the four-year commitment? I think that's a valid question. And then what differentiates you from other applicants and how will you face opposition in planning commission? So those are the four questions that I think I wanna stick to. So that way it's. Um, equitable. Uh, across and if, yeah, so. Council, I, I see, we are in agreement or disagreement?
No, no.
Okay. Okay. And just because again, I wanna make sure this is a fair process and we didn't, you know, uh, ask or. Develop questions as a council to be able to ask for the applicants. So I think it's just enough fairness that, um, that we, we, we do that. So. So I'll begin, Eva, and I'll, I'll say them again, but introduction and interest of the interest that you have in this deployment.
Um, good evening, everyone, and thank you again. And I just wanted to hit up and praise again. The ladies who did the Zoom and, um. During my absence, I had some CalFire overtime to do. But thank you for recording that, because I had that opportunity to review and, you know, and have that planning commission win or win. So thank you again, ladies. So again. Um, Madam Mayor, City Council. And guests who are with me and then also with, um, who are watching online, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. And I wanted to voice my expectations and the ideas. On collaboration and being part of the planning commission. You know, what does a planning commission mean to me? Well. Um, first, to help implement goals into the constitution. As Adriana was sharing during her recording, the constitution is of course solid as general plan. So I'm here to, um, help to develop, I'm here to help implement, I'm here to, um, help share opinions. Um, with consistency and reviewing. Projects and sharing, um, recommendations to the council for, you know, consensus with the planning commission. Um, I'm here to help with the future, um. With the future holds for the city. Um, and also to not only. Be part of the commission, but also be a public servant, be a public servant for. For the community, you know, and hear them, you know, and get their feedback, you know, and. Receive constructive criticism because that's what we, we get. You know, and turn that around and being positive as well. You know, we all know, we, everyone has, you know, their. Opinions and advice and, but we take it, you know, I'll take it and like, okay, you know what? Let's, um, let's change this into a positive perspective. So. As a representative and a public servant for the community, um. I wanted to share that feedback and also receive. More information. And I'm just gonna, I just made this word up, you know, I'm, I'm solidadine. Solidadine, and we wanna grow, we wanna grow more into this community. You know, we wanna, you know, be more. More effective. And not only that too is. I know the planning commission members, so they. They see my eagerness, they see my motivation, you know, and not only that too, it's like, okay, let's just do it. You know, if we come to. A disagreement, then of course, you know, we have to set emotions aside and, okay, you know, let's come up with something. For solidad, not us, but for solidad. And what's the best interest in solidad? Um, also. I'm already doing it already as a. Volunteer community leader. So I'm gonna, you know, help impact. And also, you know, it's just not myself or you guys or, you know, those are. That are behind me. It's, it's us. We're the community, we're solidad. And, you know, without. Without them, we need those together. So, thank you.
Okay, Eva, so your next, um, kind of question is, um, will you be able to feel this is, as you know, for your commitment? Um, and it's on a part commitment, obviously, because there's like us, there's quorums, right? And there's projects that need to move forward. And if the commission. Is not there, then that's a stall in the project. And most of these obviously have timelines and timelines that are tied to finances. So. Um, will you be able to feel the four-year commitment?
Yes, I will. I'm very flexible with, um, the great support that I have at my employment. Um, I will commit for years.
Okay, and then I'll ask, um. The same question is what differentiates you from other applicants?
Well, I'm a go-getter. I want to. Um, I'm energetic. I'm already doing it as a volunteer community leader and, you know, just receive. Um, information, you know, use the resources that we have. And our resources is our community, our residents, our citizens, you know, and help. You know, what they want or what they want to see, you know, grow. And just speak, I mean, I'm already doing it in my neighborhood and I'm really doing it with, you know, all the. Programs and groups that I'm involved in and. And I'm enjoying all the ideas and all the opinions that I'm receiving. So.
And the, uh, final question is how will you face opposition in the planning commission?
Well, with every struggle, there's always, um. There's always. Things that we need to work on, you know, we do, we. Obviously, we face any challenges, like, you know, okay, we gotta do this, we gotta push through, you know, let's, you know. If we have to do a emergency meeting, let's do an emergency meeting, you know, we have to, we have to work at it. And. Yes, it's time consuming, but that's okay. This is what we need to do and, and make that time to be effective. And also. If something arises and I'm sure it will, you know, we're gonna learn from each other and we're gonna learn with it together. So we're gonna do it. I'm gonna do it by myself.
Okay, thank you, appreciate, um. Appreciate you being here. Thank you for submitting the application and your interest as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So I will, I don't know, the, uh, third applicant, Steven Morales is with us. I don't see him on Zoom. I don't see him here. Um. Don't see him on Zoom, okay. So, um. Steven, we have, we have canceled the, the application, um, that we have in our packet. Um, so let me, uh, just any comments, let me take it up to the public. Do I need to take it up to the public? Um, Mike, on this one, because it's an appointment. I just wanna be clear whether I need to.
You have to, uh, technically speaking, any items on your agenda, subject to public comments. So if there's anybody out there that's interested in weighing in on this. But ultimately, of course, it's, it's your decision and with the council's support.
Okay, well, let me take it up to the, to the public then, to make sure if there's anyone that wants to comment on this, I'll take it up to the public that is joining us via Zoom. If there's anyone from the public. Okay, seeing none, then I'll come back to see if there's anyone from our, in our chambers, um, who'd like to make any comments. Okay, seeing none, and then I'll bring it back to the council. So I just, first of all, Adriana, thank you so much again. I wanna thank the staff for going, going back out and trying to. Um, obtain additional, um, applicants. And I'm glad that we had additional applicants and being able to do anything for me is. Uh, provide information in terms of planning commission and how important this is. Um, how important this opportunity is. And, you know, obviously the big commitment that this is for residents, but also an opportunity for those that are engaged to continue to be. To be engaged. Um, so council, just based on the municipal code, obviously it's a mayor appointment, but also with council approval. And for me, it's based on the applications that we received, based on the comments that we had tonight as well, based on some of the history and engagement. Um, that our applicants have brought forth to the table. I do wanna make, um, a. A motion to be able to, uh, appoint Avanista Banuelos to, um, the appointment for, uh, planning commission.
Do we need a second?
Yes.
Second that motion.
Okay, council, there's a, first, there is a motion on the floor, so I'll turn it over to our city manager for, uh, Roca.
Do, do we need a motion? Or how does that work?
Well, it requires the, the language of the code actually says it requires city council approval of the appointment. So, yeah, this is a formal vote. So this is a motion to confirm the appointment by the mayor to the vacancy in the. The planning commission. Uh. Mayor Protem. Uh, Inennis?
Name?
Uh, no. Councilmember Chavez? Councilmember Coralejo?
No.
Councilmember Cabrero?
Yes.
Mayor Velasquez?
Yes.
So the motion appears to fail three to two.
Okay, so council, this is what I'm gonna do then. Um, so we're gonna go back and, um, I think it's important to be able to get recommendations that you may have. So if you have a list of individuals that you'd like to, um. Recommend and that we can send them over to Adriana, so we can reach out to them. Um, and then you can come back in the next council meeting to see if we have additional, um, recommendations and applications, uh, for this.
If, if you can, make a comment?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, first off, I'd like to thank both Flavio and, uh, Eva for, for coming forward. And I, I, I gotta admit, I was torn by both. Because one of the fact is that Eva is, uh, contributes her time, gives to the community. And, uh, so, um, that was one of the things that tore me. Uh, but, told me to go her way, but the other part was Flavio. And, uh, the need for youth, you know, we appointed a council member. And, uh, I heard the community out there and, and they came at us and said, we need that perspective. We wanna see. Uh, the underrepresented, the, the people to have a voice. And so for me, that's why I was torn between the two. Um, here we had an opportunity to place somebody who, uh. Um, was of that age group. I look at myself as like a football game, nervous and football. Playoff time, uh, being in the fourth quarter. I'm in my fourth quarter. And, and the people are saying. You know, all our representatives are from the third quarter and the fourth quarter generations. And we need people from the first. Uh, first quarter and second, uh, quarter generation. And, uh. You know, we have an opportunity to do that. And we have somebody eager to do that as, uh, to participate and learn, uh, from that. Um, I was so impressed with, uh, some of the. The, uh, people that were elected in other communities, mayors at the age of twenty-one, uh, young mayor in Monterey. Um. And us being able to reach out there. So, uh, I did take the heart, uh, when we did our last appointment. And, uh, so that's what. That's what really taught me. And I, I just wanted to see an opportunity where we give somebody from the first quarter. Uh, uh, a voice in our, in our, in our city process. Well, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Um.
Well, uh, can I make a comment?
So, um.
Just a quick comment.
Procedure, do we open it up for comments? Um.
Yeah. You actually opened it up to, to. Okay, I think that it's fine, actually. We should comment.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Cabrera.
Yeah, I just, um, um, I wanna make comment that, um, both of them are really qualified. I, I think that, um. Well, qualified in, in the way that they, they show themselves, they, they have a purpose, they, they. They show the characteristics. But taking the example of, uh, Councilman Jimenez, uh, it is the fourth quarter. Who are you gonna put as your best player for the last, the last, uh, uh, um, play in the game? Are you gonna put somebody that has been constantly? Playing good, constantly present, constantly succeeding? Or are you gonna play somebody that is new? I think Flavio, Flavio has a very. An extraordinary potential. But I also think that, um, uh, Eva has been continuously. Show their appreciation for our city and their, and her commitment to do things in our community. And I think that that is my, my only, the only thing that I could, that I could emphasize. Because I see Flavio's potential, I know that he's as smart, that he can connect with people. But I also see, uh, Eva, I have seen Eva, uh, working in the, in our community for years. And, uh, I think that she has more. Um. She will have more the ability to be there for, for the planning commission. Flavio will have a lot more opportunities. Uh, and I know that he's gonna succeed in, in them because he's, he's, he's talented. And he has what it takes to be here. But, uh, that's why, um, um. I am, uh, offering my support for Eva.
Thank you, Councilmember Cabrera. And do we have, I'll open up comments from Councilmember Coralejo?
Um, yes, thank you. Um, I wanted to say, again, I reiterate what I said from the beginning, um, my first comment, which was that I was glad to see the three applicants. Um, you know, and I think they all have, uh, strengths in their, you know. Uh, whether it's community engagement, um, networking or, or whatnot. Um, I think all three are, are great, to be honest. Um, to me, what, what stands out from Flavio is specifically the fact that. He's good for, you know, for me, for the planning commission. And the reason is because. Uh, you know, he has. The knowledge, it's not, he's, you know, young again, uh, but, you know, that's what we want. We want youth to represent. Uh, you know, other, other young people and to lead us kind of into. Uh, you know, our growth here in our town. But. He has gone out of his way to attend meetings that have to, you know, that impact. Uh, planning, housing, um, economic development. He has really made an effort. Not just in general to, uh, to volunteer, which he does also. Um, but very specific to this, like he's been focusing. On, on it. He's been meeting with staff, he's been attending county meetings, city meetings, uh, planning commission meetings. He's, you know. Um, I, I believe he's, you know, pretty, pretty well, uh. Versed and, and knowledge more, more, I think, that most, um, you know, people. Uh, when it comes to that, because he has put in the time and, and the effort.
Thank you, Councilwoman Coralejo.
I think everybody said everything. I think, I don't think there's a whole lot. And for me, I, you know, the same as, uh, Mayor Protem. I think that pretty torn regarding our, our two applicants here, um, you know, having not. Seen the other applicant, uh, before us, didn't get to hear from, from the other applicant. So, uh, outside of that, you know, I think that. You know, I, I, I believe what folks said, um, you know, all of us have our different perspectives in regards to. Uh, being a football game or not a football game, um, you know, I think there's different ways of approaching anything, uh, having coached for. You know, since ninety-five or, and before that, a little bit before that, you know, there's always a different way of approaching every game. So. I, I won't say anything else.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Chavez. Um, so for me, I mean, I'm not gonna talk in football terms because I don't understand it. And, you know, I'm okay with that. But, uh, my kids and my husband do, and that's great for me. But, um. I think for me, and, and I wanna say thank you. And I, you know, I think for me as well, um, you know, uh, obviously Flavio brings a lot to the table. Um, and obviously youth is something that I'm, that, that I'm supportive. Um, and we did have an opportunity several months ago to have that youth perspective at the council. So I just wanna remind the council that I know that when, when we heard we had really. Great opportunity to do that. And I know for me, it's looking at those opportunities where we can. Have that voice representative because we don't have an equitable representation on this council, nor, nor do we. And some of the other committees that we have. And to be able to achieve that, I think it's, is important. But it's also. Looking at the different demographics, looking at our young, at our young population. But also for me, on the planning commission. It's an equitable representation of, of women. And we have all, you know, all there was. Majority had been all men, with the exception of. One, right? Which we had one planning commissioner, which was, um. She laughed. Um, so when we talked about equitable structures as well and being able to look at. Those representations and those voices that are around the table, I think that's, that's really important. And obviously in the planning commission role, it's critical to be able to hear from different perspectives and. Different demographics from our community that are equally as important as our youth and our, and our women. Um, so I think for me, the other, the difference is, and it, as both are very qualified. And I just so appreciate, you know, um, Flavio Diggerness. But I think one of the things for me that, you know, my recommendation to be able to appoint, um, Eva is, Eva hasn't just been here. As interest just in this appointment. I mean, she's been in our community meetings. She's been part of the staple of the city council for, you know, for many years is. I remember I came on board as a councilwoman. And Eva was already here before us, you know, trying to. Get different initiatives for our community. I mean, we see what, what she's done here. Um, and it's not just from now, it's not just from a year ago, it's from years of community service. Um, and I think for me, it's imperative to be able to support women like her that really want to, that, that. Are serving already in our community and giving the opportunity to be able to expand that expertise and knowledge, that voice. That engagement. She has a lot of the context, connections, is able to really. Bring in some of that feedback. And I think that's really important, especially when we're talking about different. And I think that's really important, especially when we're talking about different projects and developments that are coming. To be able to understand and hear directly um, from our community. And she has, she, she has those ties and being able to bring in that element and supporting her to be able to understand some of, like all of us, right? I mean, we, we're, we're not all versed in local government, but being able to understand municipal code, being able to understand land use, um, all of that. But I think, you know, her, her kind of um, already positivity that comes with that. Is already her desire to, to work with our community, her desire for community engagement, her desire to make Solidad a better place. Um, her desire to really engage more in the different policymaking of our city of Solidad. And for me, you know, um, that's what separated Eva and why I was excited to be able to make a mo- a motion to appoint her. Disappointed that the council, obviously, you know, um, didn't go, didn't go through. And I think for me, if we're gonna go back out there and get more names, I really want each of the council members to think about who they feel or who they think would make a good recommendation to bring forth. Because I don't think it's fair to have to go back out again and uh, bring Eva back or bring Flavio back. And then be able to again, do this process. Um, so I, I, I think for me, that's my, my deliberation in terms of my recommendation for Eva. And everything that she brought to the table from many, many years ago. Um, and what she, she can, can continue, she'll continue to bring to the table whether she's appointed tonight or not. Because that's the kind of person she is and what she's done for our community. Um, and so with that, you know, I commend, you know, Flavio, I commend Eva for coming forth. Um, I commend Steven, even though he's not here as well, for submitting the application. And it's my hope then that the council will be able to bring more applicants. And then we can come back again in February and have, have this conversation. Um, and particularly disappointed um, that the appointment to select Eva um, failed. Yes.
Make me, I wonder if I could summarize and give clarity where it's needed on the next steps. So as I understand it, this, this, the appointment, your, your appointment and confirmation process will be based on the next agenda. You've asked individual council members to give you names of candidates that they think might be, should be considered. And when you do that, urge them to submit the proper application. Uh, we'll confirm with the three folks who've already expressed interest that they're remaining interested, so you're aware of that. Uh, we'll advise Mr. Morales that if he remains interested, it'd be good if he could be at the next meeting. Uh, but I also wanted to alert you that although you have not yet established a formal community engagement process for the general plan update. No doubt there will be opportunities for formal advisory groups of some fashion. And all of these folks will be good candidates for that kind of activity.
Thank you for, for sharing that. I think, you know, we, I think as a council, we, we already know that we wanna make sure that um, we engage our community. And we engage those that are here tonight, whether it be Flavio or whether it be uh, Eva. Um, you know, they're already engaged and that we continue to provide those opportunities for them and for others that are not here.
Uh, point of clarification. Yes, um, I have, um, in the past, the, the last time that we had this uh, this issue. And uh, and um, or this item in the, in the agenda, if I recall correctly. Um, city attorney made, made, made a clarification that it was the appointment only. The appoint, the uh, mayor appointment only. I don't recall mentioning that it was, that it had to be approved by, by council. Can you, Mike, can you uh, please clarify in that?
Is the, the language for the appointment of a planning commissioner, um, is actually set forth in the uh, city code, the municipal code. Um, and it specifically states that the uh, that the members of the planning commission shall be appointed by the mayor with the approval of the city council. So that's why it requires the approval of the city council, unlike the uh, the previous appointment to fill the vacancy. We also have some committees where the mayor has the uh, ability to appoint, which is what's known as a consensus. That basically just usually unless there's a strong objection, the appointment uh, falls. But in this particular case, the statutory language in the municipal code dictates that there actually has to be formal approval of the council for these appointments.
And, and what is the code number?
Um, it is uh, you would ask that after, it is.
Two point, twelve point zero of the Solidad Municipal Code.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. Okay, council, wow, we'll do this again. Um, and hopefully we're able to confirm a, a, a comment that we, um, you know, we can all agree with. Um, so like, we'll move on to our next item.
Thank you, Andrea.
Okay, so council will move on to item B three with the workshop to review progress on council goals.
Mayor City Council, uh, as your interim city manager, I'm recommending that you uh, fulfill one of your goals. Did you know that it is a council goal to have annual goal setting session?
That's, yes, I'm gonna achieve our goal.
Uh, but as, but as an interim, uh, I think it's important to have your full-time city manager, once you make that appointment later. To be fully brought up to speed and to participate in a goal setting session next year. But for this time, I'm suggesting that we have an informal conversation among council members in which we review the progress on the goals you've already established. And get short uh, status reports from the departments rather than preparing lengthy briefing books for you. Uh, to just keep it informal and, and uh, and for that end, we suggest we find a date in February. Saturday would be preferable from my perspective, I don't know about your, how you go as well. Uh, meeting at the end, there's a meeting room available at the community center, we might be able to do this.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. Um, so let me take it out to the public if there's any questions on item B dash two before we bring it to the council. Is there any member of the public that's joining us via Zoom that has any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, then I will bring it to those that are joining us here in our um, chambers. Any questions or comments on item B dash two, three, B dash three. Okay, seeing none, um, yeah, thank you, thank you for this. I think it is important going back and reviewing the goals, um, there's a lot that has happened since. Um, so there's obviously a lot of updates and also, um, you know, just being able to make sure that we, as the council goals that we're looking at, what has been completed, what, what is pending and what is not viable anymore. Um, so I think council, if we can look at a Saturday when we all can agree. And I think what typically Darni does is uh, send out, really like a, a doodle poll of that for a Saturday. Um, if that works, but if we can identify uh, you know, for this to happen. I know we wanna make sure at least we have some of these updates before our next uh, before the budget approval. But we start budget, I think we start the mid-year budget reviews already in March, correct? So.
Uh, we're gonna be handing out the, the top of Mike this morning, we're gonna be handing out the budget calendar to staff tomorrow morning. And I don't recall exactly which meeting we are scheduling, the mid-year review. Uh, which is, as it suggests, a review of progress today and see whether adjustments are necessary, we don't anticipate many. Uh, but the, the recommended budget for FY twenty-four would be submitted to you in early May.
Okay.
But we're preparing it uh, in March and April.
Okay, so if we can look at then maybe the, the last weeks of February. Um, maybe like on, if we're looking at a Saturday, um, maybe on the, either the eighteenth or the twenty-fifth. If not, then we could do March, the first week of March would be. Oh, I can't.
What about March uh, what if we were to shoot from like February eleventh instead? Is that far enough?
Yeah, for us, yes.
I'm just thinking, it's not too far from now.
Okay.
But I think the, the, the problem I think we'll run into on the, you know, if, if we were to do the eighteenth, I think there's a holiday right after. Uh, there's just things that both might take advantage of.
What's a holiday? Okay, so let's try to see if there is a fourth and the eleven. Fourth. Oh.
Not this fourth.
No, sorry, I can't do any fourth either. So the eleven, so the other option would be the eleventh or the twenty-fifth. So can you do it?
Eleventh or twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
And, and of course, we only wanna do it often participates, we'll find out if we can participate in those dates. Uh, and when we find the date, uh, then the mayor will call the special meeting for that and we'll have to come back to.
Okay, perfect, so eleven and twenty-fifth, if we can just kind of look at those dates, council. Respond as soon so that we can have it on the calendar. Okay.
Great.
So we're good on that, so we'll move on to then, um, our next item on our agenda, which is emergency mutual aid to Chular. And this is item B dash four, and I will turn this over to our interim city manager.
Uh, Mayor members of the council, and I in turn will ask Dawn, uh, the public vice director, to make a few comments. But if with your permission, at the conclusion of after you've taken action on the item, I'd like to give you and the community an update, as I suggested earlier. On a response and lessons learned, you know, this one of the.
Yes. Okay, so Dawn, we'll turn it over to you.
So this is the item for the Chular Mutual Aid. So this, the Chular Community Incorporated area in Monterey County, um, has a county district that provides sewer service. Uh, collection and treatment, their plant is located right next to the Chular River Bridge. And the plant became completely submerged with the crest of the Salinas River last week. So their raw sewage was unfortunately entering the Salinas River. It was very swell, so there was not a whole lot of public health hazard. Starting Tuesday this week, which was yesterday, they began trucking all their uh, wastewater from the Chular Community to the city of Solidad Plant for treatment. Comes to about sixty thousand gallons per day, uh, that increases the Solidad, uh, to, to about two percent. We're running about three million gallons per day, our plant can handle five million gallons. So three million plus sixty thousand is not a significant uh, added loading to the plant. We chose the manhole at the end of West Coaches Road for, to be the delivery point, uh, the trucks can turn around. Uh, there's not much traffic down there, but across from the old power plant there. Um, so that's been working out well, um, we get to truck about every two hours on average. Um, the, I drive by there every day, the Chular Treatment Plant. Um, as of this morning, you can see the tops of the bank sticking up, but it's, it's gonna be a while before the river subsides enough for them to assess if it's just uh, restoring the, the ponds and getting the pump started again. Or if the pumps in the electrical gear were all submerged and ruined, that could take significant amount of time. But um, the county and the state water resources control board have been talking. We, our chief plant operator has also been involved in the conversations with the state. And they, uh, totally blessed of the Solidad Treatment Plant can handle it, treat it. And everybody's much appreciated that the city manager has agreed uh, to prevent this to cap to, to start the process. And uh, presented to council for ratification. So it's gonna be probably a good thirty days before they have an assessment and know how long it's gonna be. Uh, but if the motor control center electronics are disturbed, it could be six months. We don't currently have an out-of-town wastewater charge. Uh, we do uh, serve Dole um, out of town uh, with wastewater service, but that was a negotiated number. Uh, so the best number we have is the number we uh, we charge uh, the winery in town. That's the uh, for, by gallon instead of by house. So we have a rate that we proposed, they've accepted it. Um, and then we can relook at it if it's gonna be more than sixty days. So be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you so much, Dawn, for that and thank you for, I, I just wanna say thank you to the city and thank you for um, making sure, obviously, there was a lot of impacts because of the storm and, you know, uh, unfortunately, obviously, you know, this happened to the city of Chular. But we've seen, you know, all this, all the way from Templeton, right, where they had some, some of that um, concerns as well. So I just wanna say thank you because when we talk about mutual aid and we talk about partnerships, especially within the Salinas Valley Cities. These are one of those examples that we're able to support each other. Um, and being able to have this as an example for future to come, right? This time it was Chular, next time it might be us and we need other types of support from other cities. So I think for me, I just wanna say thank you for making sure that this happened uh, quickly. And they were able to find a resolution within the city of Solidad and were able to help. So um, I don't have, I mean, I don't, for me, it's just, you know, thank you for that. And I think for me, the only thought that this brings is just exploration, it's for a future conversation, not today. Uh, I know at one point we talked about the capacity of our wastewater treatment facility. And I know obviously there's expansion that's happening throughout the valley. And if there's an opportunity to really look at how do we start, have those conversations about MOUs and start thinking of, look, instead of building a facility in Gonzales, can we build, you know, the infrastructure to be able to absorb some of that? And then that provides us with additional revenue, right? Um, right now, obviously, our plant ma- massive, um, and would that be a possibility? So, you know, maybe it's a possibility, maybe it's not, but I think we have to look at those explorations. Obviously, our plant is, is, you know, was built and designed to be able to absorb beyond the capacity that we're using it. And so under utilization of our public facilities, it gives us an opportunity to look at that.
And it's also better rates for regional plant can offer better rates to all the, the property owners. Uh, rather than two separate plants, they're both gonna pay, pay higher rates than one regional plant for charge. So, yeah, it's definitely something we have a vested in. We're also um, have been asked to help Chular assess and fix their treatment plan. Not any city funds, just advice on, uh, we've got some grade four operators that are probably the most experienced in the area. Uh, with all the plants around here, so we'll probably offer some technical uh, advice as well.
Yeah, yeah, no, thank you, absolutely, there's a, a lot of the knowledgeable team. Um, so let me open it up to the public to see if there's any public comments and then I'll come back for, for council comments or questions on this. Um, so I'm gonna open it up for the public, those that are joining us via Zoom, if there's any questions on item B dash four. Okay, seeing none, then I'll bring it back to those that are joining us in the chamber, if there's any questions on item B dash four. Okay, seeing none, then I will start off with any comments or questions from our council members joining us uh, via Zoom. So I'll start off with Councilmember Cabrera.
I just wanna thank Dawn that he's doing excellent job and, and al- always, always doing great job. Thank you so much for being proactive and everything in, in reaching out to the community, thank you.
Well, and we've got an excellent wastewater operations and mechanical staff, that's who's really taking care of this, for the city.
Uh, Councilwoman Cora Leno?
Um, yes, thank you. Um, first of all, yeah, just uh, you know, I concur with, with uh, with Cabrera when it comes to just thanking you for, you know, the partnership and being there for our sister city, uh, Chular, definitely glad that we were able to help. Um, I just wanted to ask, I know that the last time that I recall, we were at forty percent capacity. Uh, when it came to uh, utilization, is that still correct?
Uh, we're closer to sixty percent, the city is forty percent and then CDCR is another twenty percent.
Okay, okay, but we're still, we're still good like in capacity to where we are able to help out. Whether it's uh, like we said for, I think it had been said like a, a month or six months.
Yes, we'll go from sixty percent of capacity to sixty-two percent of capacity if we had, since we had a Chular.
Yeah, all right, uh, that was my only concern, just to make sure that we are able to, uh, to continue helping, thank you, Dawn.
It's roughly sixty thousand gallons a day.
Yeah, thank you, Dawn, um, Councilmember Chavas?
Uh, you know, just uh, thanking uh, our interim uh, city manager for uh, helping to guide this along and making certain that uh, we're being flexible. And I think that being flexible, being able to give that mutual aid to another community uh, that is in an incorporated area that isn't a city, um, I think is, is, is great. And I think that, you know, uh, unfortunately, a lot of us that drive through, through the one-on-one, see the water that, just the water on the freeway itself. Um, that kept coming and kept coming. Uh, I know that one of the days, um, you know, I think I drove through there at probably at five, seven miles an hour. I'm going through there just because it was, we were, we were uh, kinda stuck. But I think that that is just, uh, you know, the infrastructure in our county. And we've seen the Gonzales Bridge is deteriorating, uh, we're seeing things happen all over. Uh, not just uh, here on the Central Coast, but all over the place. And so uh, thank you to, to you and thank you to Dawn and all the staff to, for helping out. Uh, the one thing I did uh, notice in the documents, uh, Chular being spelled incorrectly. So just wanna make sure that if we did do any contracts or anything with the county, if we just spell it correctly, which is.
With the name.
With the name?
Yeah. So it's C-H-U-A-L-A-R.
Okay, and I drive by it every day and that's my interpretation of the spelling, we just, somebody.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for. Yeah, thank you, thank you for grammatical errors there.
I don't know if it makes any difference in a contract, but just in case.
There's a city that's punctual.
It's a silent day, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to thank staff on the quick response and being able to help out our neighbor in the situation where we're all in in dire straits at that point, and unfortunately, we had the capacity to handle it and it didn't crest over on ours. Any, any, were, any complaints from neighbors, anything like that around that area, about the trucks, about, I don't know if there's like smell coming out of there or not.
So we sandbagged around the area. We had some other trucks running over the sandbags, just, but no, it's worked out well. We just met today to determine, that was our first choice, is it working well, or do we need to move it somewhere else? And between the truck deliveries, our staff, they said that location's working great.
Great. And we advised the police department to normally be enforcing overweight vehicles and trucks on, not on truck routes. This is happening, so everything's okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So at this point, thank you so much, Dawn, and thank you to the team at the wastewater treatment facility, they're amazing. So I will turn it over to our interim city manager to give us an update, just on some of the storm.
On this particular item, we still, we need to make options to improve the acting. I mean, it came about quickly, I think on Thursday, Thursday afternoon, it's like five-thirty, and I think it was the interim city manager's first day. He is faced with this decision about, you know, how to handle this emergency situation, so.
So we just survived the night knowing our plant wasn't gonna be flooded.
Everybody on the staff, well, for making the right call, but we wanted them to have the, the city council confirm that particular action, ratify the action that was taken. I'll go ahead, make the motion to confirm the decision to accept the raw wastewater from the Chular community to the city's wastewater treatment plant.
No second. So we have real copies?
Mayor Proten, Menendez.
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Corlejo.
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Yes.
Mayor Velezquez.
Yes. Motion passes. So now, at this point, before we adjourn, we'll allow, we'll give an opportunity to our interim city manager to be able to provide us with some updates in regards to some of the stormwater.
Thank you, I don't have any slides. But I've been making some notes. I wanted to bring to the council's attention and report to the community some our, we had a short meeting with the staff just yesterday, I guess, in which we talked about what happened, what we learned from it. I wanted to share some of those things with you. So I'm gonna talk about preparation, I'm gonna talk about response, and talk about recovery, and then the lessons learned. So as I've come to learn, but you already know, you have a staff that was whose culture is one of teamwork, preparation, and that was reflected in their, their whole activity during this two period of the storms, rain and wind. And they have somebody who suggests a can-do attitude, so that helped. Notwithstanding that, I'll get the lessons learned, and there's some things we can improve on in the future. So in terms of preparation, we made sure that all the emergency response staff, including public works staff, were on call. We added to the on-call staff. Turns out, I don't think we needed to really call anybody in, because as you may know, there was only a few places in town where we really had concerns in the end that we needed to respond to. And I'll talk about those in a second. We made sure that all the vehicles were fueled, our emergency generators were fueled. In event that we were unable to, gas stations didn't work, because power went out or anything. As you all know, the Corps of Engineers had recently completed an armored levy around the wastewater treatment plant, which turned out to be helpful to us and made it less anxious for us as we proceeded. The Public Works crews did more than normal storm drain maintenance, and they made sure that storm drains were cleared. We did during preparation, we reached out to the unhoused community in the encampment in the river to advise them that water was gonna rise. And our fire department coordinated with outside agencies for reconnaissance and event of potential river rescues. Which again, wasn't really an issue for us. How did we respond? And in result, there was actually minimal local street flooding. There was a particular hotspot, as you know, on the east end of San Vicente. Talk about that a little bit later as well. Our fire department was staffed up and ready to go. We had reviewed a potential shelter for evacuees, which, of course, did not become necessary. We did then, in the emergency response, work with the unhoused community and encampments to move them up out. Now's time to move. It's not just a warning, you gotta move. And, and by and large, they did. All the footnote, many of them were moved back down as the waters have proceeded. We did not activate the emergency operations center. That had both pros and cons. Pros is that the people who would otherwise be in the center were out working, doing what needed to be done, supervising during, during the event. The con was that perhaps we didn't establish communications with all the appropriate agencies initially. Took us a while to connect with county OES, PGE, the schools, and frankly, with the council members. So that's something we, we've got to need to work on. So because you are our eyes and ears in the community, you are the, you can help convey accurate information to the community. Eric Protem already mentioned, we want to be the go-to information source during these emergencies. And we want to build a culture within our community that they know that they can look to the city's official communication vehicles as the way which to get accurate information. As already alluded to, we had to deal with rumors about whether or not roads or bridges were gonna be closed. And we were not always contacted by the people who took action as a result of that. So that's something we need to continue to work on. You talked, Mayor, about the need for social media. There are many avenues of social media, we need to use them all. And I think as, even as the event transpired, we became better at that, and that's a lesson that we've learned. It's important that we have consistent, accurate, and timely information to the community and that is involved. And so toward that end, the con of not setting up the EOC is that there is a standardized emergency management system called SENS that the public safety people are familiar with, and not all our new staff are familiar with, that establishes roles and responsibilities and makes sure that all the information comes to a single point so that there is, as I suggested, consistent, clear, and timely information and direction. But we all know what each other is doing. We did not have a very disastrous emergency, which was, was good, but we learned lots of lessons. And one of the things we think we will, we, perhaps this is a project for the next city manager, is to actually have an actual, what are called tabletop exercise in the emergency operations center. Past experiences, as I understand it, were too generic and not related to what might really happen in Solid Ed. So that'll take time to plan and work with the county OES to organize such a thing. But we will, we'll follow up on that as well. So the wastewater treatment plant was probably our highest risk, and we avoided that. But as we said, we learned some lessons, and I think communication is absolutely critical. We did a pretty good job talking to each other. We did not necessarily initially establish communication with all the other affected agencies that we could have, could have helped us. And we need to communicate, continue to communicate more with the community at large. So that's my quick report.
Yeah, thank you so much for pointing out some of those, obviously, some of the things that worked really well. And then also the assessment of some of the things that can, that can change. I know, obviously, as we knew that these storms were coming, right? There was a lot of, already, I think for us, and I think what I've learned also, in my capacity is, you know, we had a lot of information that was coming down about this atmospheric river and some of the damage, potential damage that it could have, that it was gonna cause. And so with that is, I think for me, is just preparation, right? Being able to have those conversations about if this is here and if it's gonna have this kind of damage, this is how we're gonna prepare. And I think for the council to be able to understand that, I know, obviously, we have a massive emergency response plan that was provided to all of the councils. Some of the newer council members were not part of that, you know, emergency preparedness plan that happened maybe like two years ago. And so not all of us were part of those conversations. And so I think it's important to be able to understand what's in there, right? Because those are really critical protocols. So for me, it's just what I had asked, is just a presentation on that for future, just so we know as a council, you know, in case we have another emergency, that we know what some of those major protocols are. And I know for me, what I saw in the activation of the EOC in the county, I mean, that was really well coordinated. But unfortunately, when, you know, our chief wasn't part of that, and our fire chief wasn't part of that, it was really difficult, right? Because they were activated. I mean, they were already at a level one since the storm began. And we, we were not there yet. But I think the other thing that I learned through some of the collaboration that happened afterwards, when we were part of the, part of the conversation, the sheriff's department actually had a lot of resources as well. And they had a PIO, they had individuals, and I know for the rumor control, they could have assisted us instead of us having, you know, I know Jesus did a great job, but they also had, I mean, they had their PIO that could have provided, you know, support to, to Jesus. They also, the county also through there, what I've learned, the county as well, through there, now their department of, you know, through their PIO and their department also about which they could have provided. I mean, they were sending a lot of that information. I know a lot of it was really difficult for even me to look at it and filter through it. But being able to have more of, hey, this is the message, the daily message. And I think that was really important that we saw that it was a comprehensive, there should have been a comprehensive message. Whatever the county was putting out, and I know those were really tailored to what was happening, that, you know, the city was putting those out. And then those, those links, because the county had, I mean, I think for me, is encouraging our residents that weren't getting the alerts, that the county had those alert systems that we, our community could be tied into to really receive information more up to date in terms of those evacuations that were happening and where. So our community would know that it wasn't happening here, right? Those evacuations weren't happening here. And although maybe some of those maps were incorrect one time, I mean, I think the information that was coming out of the county was really, was really critical and was really user-friendly in terms of what was coming out. So thank you, thank you for that evaluation. And I think for me, the other thing that I've learned also was with the levy, I'm glad that that happened. But I also know is going back and looking, Dawn, at the assessment of that levy, because I think there could have been an expansion of that, right? We didn't anticipate the flood levels at a hundred-year flooding to be able to, you know, yeah, like thirty years ago or beyond, right? And so. Yeah, so I mean, it's crazy. So even if they, they did, that's great. But I think now it's going back and looking at some of that assessment and damage, right? Because now it's, you know, the expansion, if it would have been expanded further out, which I know, obviously, it's Army Corps of Engineers. But now that you guys have that data, now that we have that information, is how do we go back and say, is there an opportunity to be able to expand that levy out, further out? Because a river came out, like, you know, where it wasn't anticipated, right? So I just want to say, you know, thank you for giving us that update. And obviously, there's a lot of lessons learned and a lot to us, council. I think that we could be engaged in and that we can be prepared for, and that we can be part of the, the community engagement effort to really cohesively and, you know, comprehensively send out that information that the city's sending out. Okay, thank you for that update. So, so since it's not an item on the agenda, I'm not gonna go out to the public, but any comments from the council? I'll start with Mayor Protem.
Just real quickly, is, you know, you mailed in many of the items that, that we need to look at. And I think it's important that the new council members and all of us are included as well. And, and obviously, it'll be the city manager, the, the permanent city manager that comes on board, that we do go with this plan together, and we do create a plan. So we do include the council members, have the best, the best information, just as, as it goes on, on to the social page and, and those type of things. And, and the efforts are given by, by our staff, by our chief, the police, city, city works. And that way, that message being shared from, and, uh, the best information and the most knowledgeable, and which is that you guys are experts in the room that are giving us that information, we're putting it out there, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I think overall, it was a, a, a good job that our staff did, and they've done it before. And I think, you know, the same spot that we always have trouble with is that culvert up on San Vicente. And I know the staff went out there, cleaned it and cleaned it, but, you know, eventually, you know, the mud is gonna overtake that, that, that culvert, because it's just so small. And, and you guys did a wonderful job closing it off, taking care of it and cleaning it up as best you can. And so I think the, the big worry is, is that area over in where our sewer treatment plant is. And luckily, you know, we did have that repaired and, and fortified a little bit right before all of this happened. And as far as, but I think that, you know, with, what, what brings, what's brought forth by the interim city manager is, is really important that, you know, in a, in a rain event, you know, we, we know that it's coming. We know that, you know, there's this water that's coming. However, in an earthquake, we, we don't have that. We don't have that knowledge. We don't have that ability to say, oh, it's coming this three days from now. It just hits. And so in stuff that's happened to Paso, that stuff that's happened to Watsonville, stuff that's happened in the Bay Area, I, I think we need to make sure that we have those pieces in place so that we are ready and prepared for those emergencies. I think we continually improve. And I think, you know, like, like it was said, there's lessons learned. But I think we just need to prepare for those, those, those things that we don't know is coming. Because, yeah, the floods and those things that, I wasn't worried so much about our city as part of the floods we're concerned. I think the, the Public Works has done an awesome job. I think our infrastructure, the pipes that we've changed on Gavelin, I mean, we don't even see our reclamation ditches, our parks, Veterans Park, they used to be full of water. There is, there was no water in there. There's no water in any of our places any longer because we're, we're making infrastructure changes over the years that have really helped. I think in the old part of town, there's still some structural infrastructure pieces that we need to, to continue to, to fix because we do have some, some deficiencies there. But I think overall, I, I think the city is, is well-prepared for something like this. I think the, the, the pieces are, if we were to have an earthquake, if we were to have something that's different than what we've had in the past, I think that, I think is important for us to be prepared.
Thank, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Corlejo?
Um, yes, thank you. And, yeah, I just wanted to thank our, our staff. You know, they were awesome. And also Ed as well, he kind of just jumped in right into it there. And I just think, you know, I don't wanna, I guess, reiterate what others, others have said. I concur with, you know, everyone's comments. I think, to me, it just seems like communication is very important. And, and I, I think that's one of the things that we can definitely improve on when it comes to communication. Because I know our staff was out there working hard. I, I saw them, I saw the PD, the fire department, public works, everybody out there working, our, our community engagement as well. I know our, my colleagues, us on the council were also, you know, I, I saw or heard of, of almost everyone that's on the council, you know, doing effort, you know, to reach out to people or to assess the situation or, or help others. Mike also, thank you, Mike. I, I think we were kind of in that little one week in between having interim managers. So thank you for, for stepping up and, and getting our, our department heads together. And, and I think just, you know, lastly, I also want to thank our community, their, our eyes and ears. And they were pretty good about communicating their needs and, you know, letting us know where, you know, where we, we needed to shift our attention to. So I think just, you know, it was all great, but I think in, in the future, at least for me personally, I think if we all communicated a little bit, you know, better, that way we're not duplicating, duplicating efforts and we'll be more, more efficient as well. So just thank you, everybody.
Thank you for those comments. So I'll move on to councilmember Cabrera.
I just want to thank everybody for their efforts. Mike and our interim city manager for that decision that he has to make. What a time for you to be in a, in our town, that, right? With having to do emergency decisions, and thank you so much for being so effective. And thank you, everybody. There is a, I think that when we can see other people suffering and be able I think that when we can see other people suffering and be able to do something, it demonstrates. The kind of people that we are. So thank you so much for the effort and, and the communications.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cabrera. And yeah, so I think for me, my, my last comment on that. That is, I know that there's already preliminary assessments coming out of the county, and obviously, they have a lot more staff, but, but we did have some. You know, some damage to some of our areas with San Vicente, and then some of the, the. Thankfully, nothing happened to the wastewater treatment facility, but, but in our area, there is debris that needs to be cleaned up. So if we can get. If you have some preliminary assessment numbers in terms of some of those costs associated with the winter storms, I think that's gonna be really important.
Well, when, when the president said he was coming, FEMA immediately called Cal State OES, and they immediately called the county, and the county immediately called us. It gives a ballpark. And we indicated that it might be as much as fifty thousand dollars in response cost from the public works department. I'm not sure. Done much with respect to the other departments yet. We do have the forms necessary to fill out for claims. I don't wanna give you any guarantees that we're gonna be reimbursed for those costs, but we will pursue them.
Yeah, no, thank you. Seventy-five percent reimbursement out of the, the total cost. I think it's important, right? So we can submit them, and whatever FEMA does with it, you know, we can push for making sure that they do. So, so thank you for, for that. So, council, then, if there's no other comments, I wanna say.
I did want to add one thing, which was that, especially thanks also to Brian, who graciously stood. In as the acne's DM during the entire, you know, he probably thought he was gonna have a nice quiet weekend, instead. Was tasked with organizing the, the city's effort and was. Making late calls and transferring information and support. He actually signed the city's declaration of the local emergency and so forth, so special credit to Brian.
Yeah, thank you so much, Brian, as well. So just again, you know, as everybody said, thank you to the entire team for the city of Solid Ed. That everybody did their piece to keep, you know, keep everything work, working and keep our community informed. So with that, I wanna say thank you to, to everyone, and I do, just so I don't forget the emergency response plan, if we can have a presentation. At least so that way the council is updated on some of those critical elements of that. I think that's really important, especially since it's fresh in our mind. We wanna make sure we do that now, as opposed to putting that off for later.
I recommend we, we reach out to the folks who actually prepared the, the plan for us, and they could probably come and do a, a nice presentation on that.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, council, if no further. We're doing this meeting at eight forty-three. Thank you, and everyone have a great night. Thank you for joining us.